Good morning and welcome to the New York City Hybrid hearing on the committee, Subcommittee on Zoning and Franchises. Please silent all electronic devices that vibrate. Chair, we're ready to begin.
Good morning and welcome to a meeting of the Subcommittee of Zoning and Franchises. I am Councilmember Lynn Schulman. I'm going to be the temporary chair of the Subcommittee until our chair arrives. This morning I am joined by Councilmembers Eric Botcher, Farrah Lewis, Councilmember Carr, I'm sorry. Councilmember Carr, Councilmember Moya, and Councilmember Hanks. Today we will hold public hearings for two rezoning proposals, one in the Bronx and one in Brooklyn. Before we begin, I recognize the Subcommittee council to review the hearing procedures.
Thank you Chair Schulman. I am Angelina Martinez, Review Council to the Subcommittee. This meeting is being held in hybrid format. Members of the public who wish to testify may testify in person or via Zoom. Members of the public wishing to testify remotely may register by visiting the New York City Council website at www.council.nyc.gov/landuse to sign up. Or, for those of you here in the chambers, please see one of the sergeants armed to prepare and submit a speaker card. Members of the public may also, and I would just also say that we're going to start with East Tremont, so if there's anyone here to testify for that item that has not signed up with one of the sergeants, please see one of them so you can fill out a card. Members of the public may also view a live stream broadcast of this meeting at the council's website. When you are called to testify before the Subcommittee, if you are joining us remotely, you will remain muted until recognized by the chair or I to speak. When the chair or I recognize you, your microphone will be unmuted. Please take a moment to check your device and confirm that your mic is on before you begin speaking. We will limit public testimony to two minutes per witness. If you have additional testimony you would like the Subcommittee to consider, if you have written testimony you would like to submit instead of appearing before the Subcommittee, you may email it to landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. Please indicate the LU number and or project name in the subject line of your email. We request that witnesses joining us remotely remain in the meeting until excused by the chair as council members may have questions. Finally, there will be pauses over the course of this hybrid meeting for various technical reasons and we know that for the second item, we expect a lot of witnesses that I know that your guys are patiently waiting online. We'll get to all of you, so we ask that you please be patient as we work through any issues. Chair Schulman will now continue with today's agenda items. And if I could have the panel for East Tremont join us up here on the podium, on the table.
Thank you council. I will now open the public hearing on pre-considered LU's related to ULP numbers C 220306 ZMX and N 220307 ZRX relating to the 521 East Tremont Avenue rezoning proposal in Councilmember Feliz's district in the Bronx. This application seeks a zoning map amendment to rezone existing C 4 5X, M 1 4 R 7A, and R 6A zoning districts to a C 4 4D zoning district and a related zoning text amendment to map an MIH program area. For anyone wishing to testify on this item remotely, if you have not already done so, you must register online and you may do that now by visiting the council's website at council.nyc.gov/landuse. And once again, for anyone with us in person, please see one of the sergeants to prepare and submit a speaker card. Okay. Council, please call the first panel for this item.
The panel, the applicant panel includes, and if I miss any of you, please let me know, Emmanuel Kokonakis, and apologies if I mispronounced your name, Joseph Azbaro, Michelle Ponse, and Chris Lacavara. And available for questions are Thomas Furman and Paul Regord.
Council, please administer the affirmation.
Hold on, I think there's...
It's Cal Hedigan for Community Access, not Chris Lacavara.
Okay, so, thank you. So, for those of you, can you please raise your right hand so that I can administer the affirmation? Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the Subcommittee and in your answers to all council member questions? Thank you.
Thank you. For the viewing public, if you need an accessible version of this presentation, please send an email request to landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. And now the applicant team may begin. Panelists, as you begin, I'll just ask you to please restate your name and organization for the record when you speak. Thank you.
Good morning, council members. Thank you for having us this morning. My name is Emmanuel Kokonakis with Mega Group Development and we're very excited to present the 521 East Tremont rezoning. This project is a 100% affordable mixed-use development that will include a brand-new federally qualified health center as well as ground-floor retail.
Do you have a presentation you want us to load?
Yes.
We submitted it.
Okay, just give me just one second while the staff loads it up.
Okay.
And then, once you want her to move the slides, just let her know.
Thank you very much.
All right, there you go.
Next slide, please. The sponsorship for this project is a group of very experienced operators and providers. Community Access is our not-for-profit affordable housing co-developer and will ultimately be the long-term owner, property manager, and social service provider for the project. We also have the Community Healthcare Network, another not-for-profit organization that will operate the federally qualified health center and will also own that health center in the long term. Mega Group Development and Mega Contracting are your development and building partners for this project and we have SLICE Architects as our project architect. Next slide, please. So, Community Access is a not-for-profit firm. They've been serving the city for nearly 50 years and have over, well over 1,000 units in development that they own and operate and provide property management services and onsite supportive services for. They also provide other services for Bronx residents at their multiple projects that exist in the Bronx. Next slide. Community Healthcare Network is a federally qualified health center with 14 facilities throughout the city. They serve over 60,000 New York City residents on an annual basis. They're actually a current tenant at the site where they serve nearly 4,000 Bronx residents and will be able to significantly expand those services with a brand-new facility that will be developed here. Next slide, please. And we can go to the next slide. Mega is an affordable housing builder with over 30 years of experience developing affordable housing throughout the boroughs and has worked with all the team members on this project and other projects. So this team has worked together and been successful in completing other affordable housing projects in the Bronx and throughout the boroughs. Next slide, please. SLC Architects has been around since 1940. Vast experience in affordable housing design and a lot of other prominent buildings throughout the city. One notably is the wall with building a block away. And we've, all team members have had great experience working with SLICE in the past on other projects. Next slide. I'll turn it over to Joseph Sparrow from Acreman.
Good morning, council members. Joseph Sparrow from Acreman LLP, Land Use Council representing the applicant. I'll quickly introduce the application to be followed by Michelle Ponse from Mega Development and Cal Hedigan from Community Access who will provide more detail on the transformational mixed-use development to be facilitated by this land use application. This slide shows the rezoning area and the development site's location on a prominent corner of East Tremont Avenue and Third Avenue, both wide streets across from Walter Gladwin Park. The site is well-served by public transit, including the BX 15 bus, which runs along Third Avenue and 125th Street, and the BX 40 bus and the BX 42 bus, both of which run along East Tremont Avenue. The Tremont Avenue BD subway station is located approximately .6 miles northwest and the Tremont Metro North Station is located approximately .2 miles to the west. Next slide, please. This slide shows the development site within the context of the neighborhood. The surrounding area is generally characterized by a mix of uses including residential, commercial, and a range of building heights. You can see here just to the south on Third Avenue, another 100% affordable development recently completed by Mega, the Wilfred. Next slide, please. This slide shows photos of the current conditions at the development site, which consists of four underutilized tax lots. One is unimproved and vacant, one is a commercial parking lot, and the building on the corner is a three-story commercial and community facility building that houses retail use on the ground floor and community healthcare network on the second floor. The third floor is vacant. The remaining lot is a one-story commercial building with smaller retail tenants, all with expiring or month-to-month leases. Next slide, please. This slide shows the existing zoning map and notes the proposed change from the existing C 4 5X, R 7X equivalent, M 1 4 R 7A, and R 6A zoning districts to a C 4 4D, R 8 equivalent zoning district. Next slide, please. This application proposes a zoning map change and zoning text amendment to establish a mandatory inclusionary housing area, option 1, to replace the current voluntary inclusionary housing designated area. It's important to note that the current zoning permits mixed-use development up to 5.0 FAR and 12 stories. The proposed rezoning, coupled with the MIH designation, would permit a moderate increase in density up to 7.2 FAR and an additional two stories in height. The proposed land use actions are necessary to provide for a feasible, affordable housing program while also permitting two full floors of commercial and community facility to accommodate a vibrant retail frontage and the significant expansion of community healthcare network's operations in the neighborhood. I'll now turn it over to Michelle Ponse from Mega to discuss the proposed development in more detail.
Thank you, Joe. My name is Michelle Ponse. I am a project manager at Mega Group Development. Good morning, Chair and council members, and thank you for the opportunity to discuss the 521 East Tremont Avenue rezoning in more detail. Next slide, please. So, as my colleague Joe mentioned, we're asking for a rezoning that will facilitate additional density and a modest height increase of two floors, which will allow us to address project, community needs through the project, highlighting specifically Community District 6 2021 report where they cited issues concerning homelessness, health, and crime. This project will deliver on those community concerns by providing affordable housing and the significant expansion of the community healthcare network, which you'll hear in more detail from my colleague Paul from CHN during the public testimony piece. But also, building on our experience at the Wilfred down the block at 1888 Bathgate Avenue, we received over 35,000 applications for the affordable housing lottery, at least which of 7,000 were from residents of Community District 6. Next slide, please. So, the proposed development that our team is here to discuss has four components. The first is the residential. We are going to build approximately 205 100% affordable units. You'll hear more about the unit mix and the households from my colleague Cal. The second is a community healthcare network expansion. So, as we mentioned already, CHN currently exists on the site. They've been operating since 2011. They currently house 3,800 square feet. This rezoning will allow for an expansion up to 10,000 square feet, which is going to allow them to increase the amount of services that they provide. A new service would be dentistry and they're going to be able to double the amount of patients that they see. They'll have the second floor and have a ground-floor lobby entrance. The third floor is the ground-floor retail. So, we will also have a ground-floor retail that's going to be approximately 12,900 square feet. It'll wrap around East Tremont and Third Avenues, which is again prominent commercial corridor in the area and will also help deliver and revitalize the commercial corridor as we've heard many times from community members throughout our public engagement process that they'd like to see. The last component is parking, where we will have 17 surface parking spaces and approximately 103 bicycle parking spaces in the bicycle room. Next slide. So, with the rezoning and the construction of the project, there will be a local economic development impact in the community. The first is through construction. The team is expecting to employ approximately 350 workers through all trades and subcontractors. Our team also has an excellent track record of success with local hiring and maximizing MVB hiring through our partnerships with organizations like Hire NYC. And we're also super excited to be providing OSHA 40 trainings to members of the community in the area that are interested in getting their OSHA certification. Also, through permanent operations, the local economic development impact, CHN is going to expand their current 10 staff to approximately 35. The building itself is expected to employ approximately 10 new people through the building operations and through Community Access social service staff. And the new ground-floor retail is expected to generate approximately 38 new jobs for the community. Next slide, please. So, now I'll just go through more physical descriptions of the project. Here, we have a site plan. As you can see, the building has frontage along East Tremont and Third Avenues. We have an inverted L shape. The building would be 14 stories and you can see the parking in the rear that would be accessed from Bathgate Avenues. So, addressing any concerns that there might be too much congestion either on Tremont or Third Avenue. Next slide, please. Here we have a rendering of the project. This view is from Walter Gladwin Park. As you can see here at the building, we have frontage along Tremont and Third Avenue and you can see some of the setbacks that we have on the 11th and 13th floors. These upper floors will have green roofs and will have an accessible outdoor space on the second floor for the residents. That'll be accessed through a community room. Next slide, please. Here we have the view from Third Avenue. I'd like to point out here that we have separate entrances for the residential and for CHN space, but again, we can also see the setbacks on the 11th and 13th floors. Next slide, please. And lastly, we have here the aerial view of the project. Again, you can see frontage along Tremont and Third Avenue as well as all the setbacks on the building across the 11th and 13th floors. Also, down the block, if you can see just down Third Avenue and Bathgate, that is the Wilfred where Mega was builder developer as well. And with this slide, that concludes my portion. I'm going to pass it along to my colleague Cal Hedigan from Community Access. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Cal Hedigan. I'm the CEO of Community Access and we're really excited to be part of this development. Just to go into a little more detail on the residential units, next slide, please. Of the 205 units, 143 of them will be housing units for households earning between 30% and 80% of AMI, including 54 family units, 28 two-bedroom, and 26 three-bedroom units. We've definitely heard from communities across New York City about the importance of three-bedroom units and are happy that they're part of this plan. Of the 61 supportive units, 45 will be for people, studios for people living with mental health concerns, and 15 two-bedroom units for families who've experienced chronic homelessness. Social services and property management services will be provided by Community Access. We're going to have approximately 1,500 square feet of onsite support, supportive service office space, and community space for tenant use. Amenities for tenants will include a fitness area, a computer lab, a library, and a laundry room. We're going to have green roofs, both on upper floors and an accessible roof on the second floor near the social service offices. And this, this building is part of HPD and HTC Extremely Low and Low-Income Affordability Program. In terms of the specific unit mix, there are going to be 66 studios. I better put my glasses on. 69 one-bedrooms, 43 two-bedrooms, and, next slide, please, and 26 three-bedrooms, for a total of 204 units with an additional unit for the onsite building superintendent, which really, in our experience, really adds to higher quality maintenance and upkeep of the building. And now, I believe I'm turning it over to someone else. Okay. I think, thank you very much for hearing our presentation and we're open for...
So, what I'm going to do first is, one, I want to acknowledge we've been joined by Councilmember Feliz. I'm going to ask him to make any opening statement he has. I'll ask some questions and then hand it back over to him to ask questions.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Councilmember Roswell Feliz. My opening statements are very brief. Just want to thank all of you for presenting about this project and also want to thank all of you for being very accessible. We've had hours and hours and hours of conversations about how to improve this project and how to make it work for everyone in the community and we're very thankful for that. Thank you.
Okay, I have a few questions for the applicant team regarding these applications before I turn it back over to Councilmember Feliz. Given that this rezoning, C 4 5X to C 4 4D, is fairly minor in terms of additional height and use, can you please explain, expand on the reasons this change is necessary to fulfill the project goals?
So, we're getting an additional roughly 60 units and that was determined, we went through early exercises with HPD for project feasibility to make the financing work. So that's why we're seeking the rezoning, to get to a density and a bulk that allows us to have the project financially feasible.
Thank you. How does this rezoning impact the community healthcare network's ability to support its work and mission here in the Bronx?
So, the community healthcare network right now currently has the second floor. It's subpar conditions and it's impacting their daily operations. During construction, they're going to be temporarily operating down the block at 1888 Bathgate Avenue at the Wilfred, so they won't have any interruption in services. And once construction is completed, they'll be able to move back into a 10,000-square-foot new facility that's going to have additional, additional four exam rooms and three dentistry rooms. Dentistry is going to be a new service that the current Tremont residents do not have.
Thank you. This application proposes 100% affordability. Where do conversations stand with HPD on supporting the development of this proposal and what term sheet is being sought to make this building a reality?
We've had multiple conversations with HPD. They're fully aware of the project and we'd be utilizing the LS term sheet.
And now turn it over to Councilmember Feliz to ask questions.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Chair Schulman. A few questions. The first one was, why is the rezoning necessary to complete the project? And you mentioned feasibility. How or why is it not feasible to build the current project, including expanding the healthcare facility under the current rezoning? If I'm correct, the East Tremont section of this part of the Bronx was rezoned approximately 10 years ago and it was drastically rezoned. So why is it not feasible to build under the current zoning?
Thank you, council member. So, the, the area was rezoned in 2010. We are looking to facilitate many community needs here, including, you know, expanding or refreshing the ground-floor retail. So maintaining that as well as maintaining community, not maintaining, but also expanding community healthcare networks, healthcare services to the community on the second floor. The, under the current program for providing supportive services and the affordable housing, we were not hitting a critical mass under, with the current zoning in order to achieve a financially feasible project with HPD. We went through probably three, four years ago, a feasibility analysis, a very detailed feasibility analysis with HPD and it was determined that we needed additional units and these additional two stories to accommodate those units in order to make the project financially feasible.
I would also add that the critical mass also lets us provide a highly amenitized building that's going to include 24/7 security.
Okay, so how many stories is the building going to be? 12, 14, 13?
14. As of right, we can build up to 12 and we're asking for an additional two.
And those upper floors would be setback?
So, currently there's, if I'm correct, a three-story building in this lot. We're going to be building 12 to 14 stories. What effect is that going to have on the local park, which is right across the street, if any?
So, on, on the park across the street, there will be no impact. There is a community garden up the block on Bathgate Avenue where there will be shadows cast in the winter months. So it won't be during growing season or a season when the park is, is really active, but there will be some additional shadows, I think, for a couple hours during the winter months.
And that'll be a couple hours per day, for how long?
I think, I think it's mostly in the month of December.
Okay. Thank you. No more questions for me. Thank you so much.
And now turn it over to invite my colleagues to ask questions. Anybody have? Councilmember Lewis has a question.
Thank you, Chair. I just have a, a few quick questions and I think you probably answered it. The first one is the current tenants that have leases that are expiring on, they're on month-to-month. Are those the folks that you said will be going into a new facility?
So, the community healthcare network is an existing tenant. They will be going into a temporary facility during construction. Most of the, the retail tenants have vacated as a result of COVID. The, the tenants that are remaining are getting lease buyout payments. So they are being made whole on, on their lease payments. There's a handful of tenants there, including one that's the landowner. He operates a pizzeria.
Okay. The OSHA training that's going to be provided, who will be the operator?
We would work with the council member and, and the community board to, you know, to find a local provider to provide that training that we would sponsor.
Okay. I just want to question, you want to find a qualified one? The green roofs that, that were mentioned and people suffering with mental illness, what barriers or what support will you provide to those that will have access to that roof?
So, the green roofs will be on the upper floors that have the setbacks on the 11th and 13th. Those will be inaccessible for those same concerns that you raised, council member. The second floor will have an accessible roof that'll have the protective barriers.
Last question is regarding 17 parking spaces and 103 bike racks. Is that a sufficient amount of parking spaces for providers that will be providing support?
So, the 17 parking spaces, there's surface-level parking and self-park. We expect the demand to be larger hopefully and would be able to have an intended parking that would be able to maximize the parking and including stackers and whatnot. I think we just want to get a sense of the demand before putting that infrastructure in.
And will you have EV charging stations in those spaces?
I, that's a good question. I think that's something we can certainly accommodate.
I think you should think about that.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you so much, Chair.
There being no further questions, the applicant panel is excused and I'm now going to turn this hearing back over to Chair Kevin Riley.
Thank you, Councilmember Schulman, and excuse me for my tardiness, everybody. Thank you to the applicant team for presenting and answering all the committee members' questions. Counsel, are there any members of the public who wish to testify on 521 East Tremont Avenue rezoning proposal remotely or in person?
Chair Riley, we have about three people signed up online and I think there might be one of you here in chambers. So if there's anyone that wants to testify also here in their room, please see one of the sergeants to fill out a card. And I'll just make a quick announcement that for those of you waiting to testify, please know that you will be called in as a panel and please stand by when you hear your name being called and prepared to speak when the chair says that you may begin. Please note that once all panelists in your group have been, completed their testimony remotely, you will be removed from the meeting as a group and the next group of speakers will be introduced. You can continue to view the live stream on our website. And now we will hear from the first panel, which if the chair wants to call the person.
Yes. Members of the public will be given two minutes to speak. We're going to stick to our two-minute rule tip because we have a lot of testimonies today. Please do not begin until the sergeant armed has started the clock. The first panel we're going to call up is a 1199 representative. Uh, the first uh panel we're gonna call up is a eleven-ninety-nine representative. I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name. Eunina Nia Destin-Latinwa?
Time starts now.
Just give her one second to, to get there, Sergeant.
And while we have our setup here in the room, I'll just announce for those of you that are remote, the next panel will be Cynthia Stewart, Kalista Reed, and Irene Lugo.
Thank you. Can you just state your name for the record? I'm sorry if I mispronounced it.
It's okay. It's not, it's one of those unique names.
Yes, it is.
My name is Eunia Destin-Latinwa, actually. Yes. So, um, good morning. My name is Eunia Destin-Latinwa, Vice President of eleven-ninety-nine SEIU, representing community-based organization and pharmacy division. I represent um Community Healthcare Network, CHN, workers, a network of fourteen federally qualified health centers that also staff school-based health centers and mobile medical vans. CHN qualities, um, facilities are affiliated with the New York Presbyterian Hospital Network and are located in the Bronx, Manhattan, Brooklyn, and Queens. The application presents a unique opportunity to expand the existing medical clinic, allowing CHN almost to double its capacity. The application will enable the construction of two-hundred-five affordable and supportive housing units and the creation of retail space. The new facility will expand to ten-thousand square feet, allowing for a much-needed dental clinic and expanding the number of exam rooms from eight to fifteen. The clinic consists of three-thousand-eight-hundred square feet, serving three-thousand-four-hundred patients annually. With a modest um increase in the staff, the number of appointments is expected to double from fifteen-hundred visits to about thirty-two hun- um, to thirty-two-hundred in the larger space. The benefits to the community will be enormous. CHN provides comprehensive primary and behavioral healthcare. Demands for the services increase as more and more patients saw outpatient care, excuse me, outpatient care outside of hospital setting during the COVID-nineteen pandemic, thereby growing the number of patient requesting consideration. According to the District Needs Statement of Bronx Community Board Six, high rates of obesity, diabetes, asthma, child asthma, and adult psychiatric hospitalizations attest to the need of expand, expanded service at CHN. The expansion will also include dental benefits. CHN offer judgment-free care and high-quality care regardless of their ability to pay. Adding dental care to the existing services will enhance the community's assistance. In closing, CHN's East Tremont Facility's expansion will increase and improve the healthcare services provided to this community. Eleven-ninety-nine SEIU request your support for this project. Thank you for this opportunity to testify before you today.
Thank you. And I believe you have, uh, we also have Paul Regroof, uh, a part of this panel as well. Sorry if I mispronounced his last name. Uh, you may begin.
Paul Regord, um, for Community Healthcare Network. I'm the Center Director of our Tremont site and also the Director of our mobile health clinics. Um, and so just to add to Eunia's presentation, I think some of the things that are concerned of us now is the current conditions of the building. We currently have a, a facility on the second floor with an elevator that's inoperable and a landlord that is, you know, slow to fix things. Um, we've had heating issues, which, uh, Councilmember Feliz's office was able to help us with. Um, and also, I wanted to touch on some of the supportive services that we would be able to add, um, including dentistry. Um, we would be able to get our teens-packed facility to bring teens back to the center. Um, Tremont historically has really um been a provider of HIV prevention and STI counseling um and testing in the teen uh area in local high schools, and we obviously lost a lot of connections with them during the pandemic. Um, but this would allow for office space as well for supportive services. So, that's all I have.
Thank you so much, Paul. Uh, do any councilmembers have any questions for this applicant panel? Thank you. You are excused. Uh, Council, can we call the panel that's online remotely?
Yes, so the panel will be Cynthia Stewart, Kalisha Reed, and Irene Lugo. So, Cynthia Stewart will be first.
Hi. Oh, wait, wait.
Yes, you may begin. Go ahead.
Oh, okay. So, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the proposed rezoning to allow for the creation of this extraordinary project proposed for five-twenty-one Tremont. My name is Cynthia Stewart, and I'm the Chief Operating Officer of the Supportive Housing Network of New York. We're a membership organization that represents two-hundred-plus nonprofits statewide that collectively run more than fifty-eight-thousand units of supportive housing. As someone who's been working in the New York supportive housing community for nearly thirty years, I wholeheartedly support this, this stellar project and its A-list participants. Community Access is one of our most treasured members, having helped start this movement in the seven, continued to evolve their approach since. They are one of the best providers of housing and services in New York, and they have, I think, eleven buildings in the Bronx and a well-earned reputation for excellence. I really can't say enough about them. Our community has also known and prized MegaGroup for decades, one of the preeminent developers of supportive and affordable housing. They're fast, they're excellent, and probably of greatest interest to the community, responsive. They've been great partners in creating glorious, high-quality, affordable, and supportive housing, and during the pandemic, they actually let us use one of their warehouses to distribute personal protective equipment to our community's workers and tenants. The Architects Two Slice have been designing gorgeous, high-quality, affordable, and supportive housing forever, so you're in excellent hands there. And of course, Community Healthcare Network is already in the neighborhood. All four partners are extraordinary in their individual fields, and you'd be hard-pressed to do better, and all have a long history creating housing in the Bronx. The building will be adding a hundred-and-forty-three top-quality apartments to the neighborhood that fit a wide swath of income levels, providing much-needed quality affordable housing. It'll have great security.
Time expired.
Okay. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Cynthia. The next uh witness will be Kalisha Reed. Kalisha, you may begin.
Hi, good morning. Uh, my name is Kalisha Reed. I'm a tenant here at nine-eighty-five Brooklyn Boulevard. I don't know where to begin. Just please be patient with me. My children are home. Um, I've been living here for the past two years now, and um Community Access has definitely been a pillar in me creating a foundation for my children coming out of the shelter system. I'm so sorry. Um, I, I can't say enough how much Community Access has, um, given me an opportunity to give my children a firm foundation. Um, the different workshops here, the staff here has really been amazing. I've had opportunity to have the space for my children, which is great. Um, they have a lot of festivities for, you know, the holidays and things like that, pantry, produce. It's really um been a good opportunity for me. I wouldn't have it any other way than coming into my first apartment. Um, thank you.
Thank you, Kalisha. The next witness that will testify is Irene Lugo. Irene, you may begin.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Irene Lugo. Um, I've been going to Community Healthcare Network in East Tremont for about ten years. My youngest son was three. He's now thirteen. Um, first thing I wanna say, the staff, the doctors, the nurses, psychiatrists, therapists are all amazing. I always feel welcome. Whenever there's, my, my son's doctors is not available, they always find a way to make sure my kids are being seen. Um, whenever I need anything for myself, they're there. They social support. They ask you if you need anything. Um, I think it'll be a great access to the community to make sure that we have a bigger location for East Tremont, because I think it will benefit a lot of people. Um, also, I would love, I love the idea that they will now have um dentists available, because it's hard to find good, a good location, speaking from experience, that um are good with taking care of your teeth. Um, I just wanna say, I've been going here for about ten years, and I moved all the way to Mahula Parkway, and I still would travel and not go nowhere else but Community, Community Healthcare Network. I'm not going nowhere. Um, thumbs up. I really hope that this is approved for them. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much, Irene. I'm just gonna do a last call to make sure no one here uh wants to testify on five-two-one East Tremont. Okay, do any councilmembers have any questions for this panel? Thank you. There being no more members of the public who wish to testify on preconsiders LUs related to ULYPS, number C two-two-zero-three-zero-six ZMX and N two-two-zero-three-zero-seven ZRX relating to the five-twenty-one East Tremont Avenue rezoning proposal. The public hearing is now closed, and the items are laid over. Thank you, Council. I will now open the public hearing on LUs one-sixty-eight and one-sixty-nine relating to the eighteen-eighty-eighteen eighty-eight rezoning proposal in Councilmember Jaeger's district in Brooklyn. This application seeks a zoning map amendment to rezone an existing C-eight-two zoning district to a C-four-five-A zoning district and a related zoning text amendment to map an MIH program area. For anyone wishing to testify on this item remotely, if you have not already done so, you must register online, and you may do that now by visiting the Council's website at council dot NYC dot gov slash land use. And once again, for anyone with us in person, please see one of the sergeants to prepare and submit a speaker's card. And I just wanna take a brief uh recess one second. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. I will now open again the public hearing of LUs one-sixty-eight and one-sixty-nine relating to the eighteen-eighty-eighteen eighty-eight rezoning proposal in Councilmember Jaeger's district in Brooklyn. This application seeks a zoning map amendment to rezone an existing C-eight-two zoning district to a C-four-five-A zoning district and a related zoning text amendment to map an MIH program area. For anyone wishing to testify on this item remotely, if you have not already done so, you must register online, and you may do that now by visiting the Council's website at council dot NYC dot gov slash land use. And once again, for anyone with us in person, please see one of the sergeant arms to prepare and submit a speaker's card. And I would now like to allow Councilmember Jaeger to give any opening remarks regarding this project.
Councilmember Jaeger? Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to let the applicant go straight in, and then uh I'll do my opening as part of my questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Jaeger. Uh, Council, can you please call the first applicant panel to this item?
Um, and Eric, I might need your help in case any of the names are not um correct. So, I have Eric Palatnik, Bishop Mitchell Taylor, Jessica Kouris, Anna Martineva, and Frankie Nunez.
We got them all.
All right.
Council, please administer the affirmation.
So, if you could all raise your right hand and answer the following question. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the subcommittee and in your answers to all councilmember questions?
I do.
Thank you. And for the viewing public, if you need an accessible version of this presentation, please see an e- please send an email request@landusetestimony@NYC, excuse me, landusetestimony@council dot NYC dot gov. And now the applicant team may begin. Uh, panelists, as you begin, I'll just ask that you please restate your name and organization for the record.
Sure. Thank you, Councilman Riley. My name is Eric Palatnik, and I am an attorney representing eighteen-eighty Coney Island Avenue. And if I just may request at the outset, Councilman Riley, if we just, I know we're allocated ten minutes. If we may have maybe twelve minutes or so, that would be great. Let us talk a little bit at ease. We have a lot to tell you. Uh, at first, I wanted to comment before we go into the formal presentation that I sense, as we all sense, that we're at a watershed moment when it comes to affordable housing in New York City. We want to thank you for taking the time to study the obstacles that we're confronting in making this development work. We started this process four years ago, hoping to build an eight-story building, working with Councilman Jaeger. We've come to the position where Councilman Jaeger has indicated, and I'll let him speak, that he would be happy with a five-story building. Unfortunately, a five-story building at this location with a provision of MIH housing, with the lack of four-twenty-one, with the inflation that we're all confronting in our daily life, with the interest rates as high as they are, with the cost of construction, a five-story building is simply not buildable. Consequently, nobody can afford to build it. We've studied it at a five-story building. We've studied it at a six- and a seven-story building, and we've got some reports here, and we have an expert to speak to you. It's pretty common knowledge now in New York City that without the lack of, without the four-twenty-one, with the interest rates where they are, it is very difficult to build, and this building is no different. Eight stories makes financial sense, and it fits within the character of the neighborhood. I'm going to show you picture after picture of building after building all around this building that are eight stories tall, similar in height to what we're asking for here, and do not provide a shred of MIH housing. As a matter of fact, this development will double the amount of MIH housing built within the district in the last decade. The irony is that the proposed residential building that we're seeking to speak, which is eight stories, is just a fraction of the allowable building. The C-eight-two district that we're in allows for a twenty-three-story, sky-exposure plane, community facility building, similar in density to one that was just built a few feet away at the corner of Avenue P. That's at nine stories. That building was limited by its lot size. We're four times larger in lot size. We could go four times higher. That building is nine stories. We could be twenty-three. The property could also be put to use as an automotive service station or an, or an automobile dealership, which a Plaza Automobile, the operator, the owner of the property, runs. We have no desire to build an automobile dealership here, an auto body shop, a self-storage facility, or a twenty-three-story community facility. We want to build an eight-story housing development with affordable MIH housing that matches the heights of all of the buildings across the street in the R-seven-A district, which rests just across the street. The C-eight-two line runs down Coney Island Avenue. This property is being developed without any money at all from the government. There's no tax payment. There's no federal subsidies. There's no city subsidies. It's near Mass Transit. It has a union labor component. It has many green feature, and it will create much-needed market-rate housing. The avenue itself, Coney Island Avenue, is akin to one of the great boulevards of New York City. We have Coney Island Avenue, the Grand Concourse, Ocean Parkway, Queens Boulevard, all well-known avenues. Of all those avenues, Coney Island Avenue is the only one that is littered with cars being repaired with their radiators off on the streets, and one-story pre-war, three-story walk-ups is the main source of housing. I dare say we can do better as a city. So, we're here today to ask you to make a difference with us, and we recognize that the councilman is opposed to it. And I know there are many people here who live on East Tenth Street that's behind it that don't like the size of it. I'm also gonna show you information that's gonna show how it may improve some people's lives. So, if I can go now to the next slide, and thank you for giving me the introduction. This slide, which you can, can't really see probably from where you are, but what's important to note on it is that the middle slide, the bottom dot, speaks to the fact that the CA two zoning district in this area has been here since nineteen sixty-one. It was created by Robert Moses himself, who we are now spending time trying to undo the legacy of in the Cross Bronx Expressway. He created the CA two district in nineteen sixty, three months before he left office in nineteen sixty-one, and it's remained as the racial barrier that it's been for the past sixty years, preventing any new development on this side of the street. Next slide, please. The slide you can see here on the left side is the existing and proposed zoning map. As you can see on the left side, the existing condition in the Ocean Parkway sub-district, which is the jewel of Ocean Parkway, was created to make sure that communities thrive with beautiful structures and there's all sorts of design regulations. The C eight rests within that, as you can see here. Ironically, as you can see, the R seven A district runs the entire length of Coney Island Avenue across the street. It's almost as if somebody intentionally decided that one side of Coney Avenue, Island Avenue should have housing and the other side of Coney Island Avenue should be relegated to automotive uses for eternity. We're here to ask you to change that. Next slide, please. This shows you what the proposal is, it's a C four five A, the right side, it gives you all the dimensions I gave you before, but basically it's a ninety-foot-tall building, eight stories, forty-nine MIH units, doubling the amount built within the last decade, and a hundred and ninety-one market rate apartments. A hundred and ninety-one total, so there's a hundred and ninety-one total with forty-nine in a market rate. Next slide, please. This slide just gives you a depiction of the building, I'm gonna skip through, go to the next slide, please. This slide is where all the guts of things are at, and I'd like you to spend a minute calling to your attention. This is all taken from the racial equity reports, which as you know, the city recently enacted for us to study. When we studied it and we started going into the Puma tract, what you'll start to notice is this area is grossly underserved with housing. The population in this area, the right top dot shows you that it's gone up by six percent in population in the last decade. However, the second dot shows you that housing in this area only went up by two percent. In contrast, Brooklyn went up by eight percent and the city went up by six. We're way behind in this area, we're underperforming. Next slide, please. Next slide is just the mayor's, what we've all heard and what we all know, nobody could afford to live in New York right now and we need more housing. Next slide, please. This slide tells more tales, I'm giving you a lot of statistics, this slide again was taken from the racial equity report from the city's equitable data map. The bottom ninety-nine point five percent is showing you that that is all the housing that has no affordable housing in the area. Ninety-nine point five percent, no affordable housing in the area. Top two slides, numbers are telling you that fifty-three units have been created in Community Board twelve, that's what the map on the right is showing you, that's Community District twelve. Those numbers in the dots and the number of housing units that have been built, you add those up, they add up to fifty-three, look at ours, we're at forty-nine. We're nearly doubling the amount of MIH housing, I know the councilman wants a five-story building here, we can't afford to build it. If we build eight, we can conclude the affordable housing that we need. Next slide, please. Next slide shows you sixty-five thousand dollars on the right-hand side is the community median income, that's what we're all talking about now, we all realize the AMI is nonsense. It's the community median income that means something. The CMI here, the average median income for the Puma tract four oh one six is sixty-five thousand dollars, which is spot-on to our sixty percent MIH targeting the exact people and demographic that need the affordable housing. Next slide. The unit distribution slide was done in response, in response to councilman Jaeger's request to increase the number of larger units, we had a lot of studios before. He asked us to bring the building down to five stories, I said I could not do it. He asked to mix up the unit count, I said I could, this is what I can do to accommodate his request, and this is what you're seeing here, with a vast majority of the units being two bedrooms, and others being two, one and three, and no studios. Next slide, the next slide is great, full of information. This slide is all taken from the racial equity reports, going from the top left, I'm gonna go down and then go to the right side. The population in the area is made up of sixty-three percent, sixty-three point two white, non-Hispanic, that's me. The remaining thirty percent, seven percent are ethnic, that's gone up by ten percent, nine percent over the past decade. So it's trending away from white, non-Hispanic, and towards the other ethnicities, it's nineteen percent Asian. Its foreign-born population is forty-nine percent, that's astronomical to me, nearly fifty percent of people are born in another country, and limited English proficiencies, proficiencies, thirty-six percent have limited English. The right side shows you the housing shortage, specifically, the housing units at the top are what I told you before, all the same stats, but the affordability, the third one down, twenty-one percent of the units in the area are, are, is the people that need affordable housing is only available to twenty-one percent of them. Low and moderate income, it's only available to seventy-five percent of them. There's a twenty-five percent need for moderate income housing, there's an eighty percent need for low-income housing, and I'll go up to the rent, the dot above that, which I should have mentioned, the rent burden. Fifty-three percent of the people in the community are rent-burdened, and twenty-eight percent of that fifty-three percent are severely rent-burdened. All this information is taken from the city's racial equity reports, which is all online. Next slide, please. These show you the buildings that are built all around us, within feet, within walking distance, spitting distance. The building on the top left is the as-of-right community facility built on a much smaller lot than us, using a sky-exposure plane. It's a medical office building, it's built by a local person in the community, it rests lot line to lot line and goes up identical height to what we're requesting. They built in the CA two, because the CA two allows a six-point-five community facility FAR with a sky-exposure plane. Our lot is, how big? Fifty thousand square feet, sixty thousand square feet? The size of our lot lets us go up like the Empire State Building for an as-of-right development. I'm simply suggesting that because people are here today opposing what we want to build, which has a benefit to the city. What's allowed to be built there can go much higher, and I don't know what a twenty-three-story medical building could do, but even the as-of-right for, for an automotive use, which is Plaza Auto Mall who owns the property, could be an auto repair, auto body, things like that, none of which I think has any tangible beneficial use. Next slide, please. The top-left slide here shows you what goes on on Coney Avenue right now, you go out to this property right now, you walk around the block and you will see radiators on the streets, you will see toilet seats under cars, you will see tires off of cars, hoods up, engines out, windshields off, it's a chop shop on the auto body shops. Now, we understand that cars need to be repaired, but as you can see, parked perpendicular to the sidewalk on the major arterial roadway of New York City that should have housing, doesn't really work, if you look at the middle, that's what's on the block right now in the R seven, I think we could do better than that. And if you look at the bottom, I think that we all know what a block looks like. I'm almost done with my presentation, thank you for giving me the time, I have three or four more slides. The next slide, please. This slide, the entire gray matter on the other side of Coney Island Avenue, our site's in the red, is zoned R seven A and would allow for developments of exactly the same height as we are seeking here with no MIH housing whatsoever. And I'm gonna, I showed you already, and I'll show you a few more pictures of the buildings that have been built in that picture that you're looking at right now across the street that exist, they're eight stories, seven stories, they're beautiful, they're glass, they're brand-new, and they don't have a stitch of affordable housing. We're simply asking that we be allowed to do the same thing on our side of the block, we understand that the zoning is CA two, but we're here to ask to change it. Two more slides, or three more. Next slide, please. This slide just shows you in more detail what I'm speaking to, and thank you for paying such close attention, councilmember, I greatly appreciate it. If you can see up in the, the right side of your page are the two buildings that are up in the air built, an eighty-five-foot, seven-story residential building in the R seven district, the lower side on the right, ninety-five-foot, seven-story office building, same size we want to build as-of-right, exactly what we could build where we are. Next slide just simply shows you the automotive uses, next slide, please. This is just simply what I'm speaking to about Coney Island Avenue, next slide, please. This shows you what could be constructed here as-of-right. I think it's quite compelling, since the objectors who are here are mainly opposed to what we are proposing to build, saying it's gonna affect them. This could be lot line to lot line, our building cannot, it can go twenty-three stories tall, our building cannot. Something will be built, there's a building on the property now occupied by Staples, they're closing, it will be demolished. And there's another building that was owned, operated by Estes, a very famous local wig maker, demolished and gone, the site is ready to be developed. The question for everybody in the room is do we develop it with an automobile dealership, a community facility, or a residential apartment building that could support the affordable housing that the city and this committee is asking us to provide without any state, city, or federal subsidies? Next slide, please. This slide, there are people here that are speaking on East Tenth Street, I'm here to tell you that, next slide, please. That the, next slide, there you go, this slide. This is interesting, and from a land use perspective, if you look at the bottom of the slide, you'll see the landscaped rear yard. That's the dumpsters you see in the picture at the top. The site jigs into the properties behind us, the people that are here opposing live on that block that the site jigs into. The parking lot for Staples goes right up to their back doors, you can see it in the picture, right there. The dumpsters, the kids hanging out, everybody drinking, deliveries, cars, the works, right up against the houses, you can see the dumpsters here. We're asking to turn that into a landscaped area, when we're done, there'll be a fifty-foot buffer area from those homes, and then there'll be an additional thirty feet above the first floor, separating our building from those homes by up to eighty feet. And that concludes my presentation. I thank you for giving us the time to present it, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, and Bishop Taylor, I think has a few words as well.
Okay. Good morning, I'm Bishop Mitchell G. Taylor from Inside Track PR. I was engaged by the owner to do some outreach and some research on this community and to offer my expertise as it relates to this project. Thank you for the time to learn about the issues that are preventing us as a city from catching up on the housing crises. You know, as Eric was talking and referring to the racial equity report, uh which I have combed through days and days with Sadiya and others that were on that committee, it, I, I feel like this is exactly why that report was done. When I look at the lines of demarcation that prevent prosperity from one side of the community and allows it for the other side of the community, and when I think about what Governor Hochul said at a state of the state about eight hundred thousand units of housing, and then what Mayor Adams said, about five hundred thousand units of affordable, uh housing in New York City, one point three million units of housing in, in the midst of a housing crisis, where we have seventy-five thousand migrants, forty-seven thousand homeless New Yorkers, depending on whose county. And we don't have enough places to put them. And so here we have a project that is contextual, that makes sense in a neighborhood that has been disproportionately ignored and overlooked for so many years. And I don't want to pull the race card, I don't want to talk about the redlining that seems to be here that was developed by Robert Moses so long ago, that even right now, city planning is studying some of the stuff that he put into place, because it is disproportionately impacting people of color, people in urban tracks. And we don't want this project to be cast in that same light. Mr. Palatnik said so eloquently that eight stories is just not appropriate for this neighborhood, but it's not only I'm sorry, Calvin Jaeger said it's not appropriate for this neighborhood. But it's only, but it only becomes viable when it's an eight-story building, there's no four twenty-one A, there's no subsidies. This, this project is almost impossible to build, if you look at the margins in these reports about how much money will be made, you almost think that the developer of this property is doing it for altruistic reasons, and I believe that it is. We all sense the watershed moment we are collectively experiencing in housing, a shortage across all income levels. The proposed one hundred ninety-one units of housing, including forty-nine MIH units, targeting sixty percent of the AMI, with a percentage of those units matching the CMI, is a perfect storm for people that need housing. We are seeking a zoning designation of C four dash five A, the residential equivalent of the R seven A district, which already exists all around this building. And I want to say that what could be built as-of-right will not only be intrusive, not only block views, not only be burdensome to the residents that are on that block that we just, we see up here on the screen, it'll be something that we'll all be regretting for years and years to come. So it makes no sense to me, but make no mistake about it, the surrounding R seven A district has recently seen the addition of numerous seven and eight-story multiple dwellings identical to that which is proposed here, yet none of which, which was already said, include any affordable housing. I want to skip over here a little bit. Our side of Coney Island Avenue is zoned as it has been for the past sixty-five archaic years, sixty-five years. Go to that block, I was just there last week. It's a blight on the neighborhood. It's a, it's a mark, it's a stain, it's, it's, it's just, I can't even believe it. And it was designed for automobile use, allowing towering community facility structures. One has already been built just a few feet away from our site, that, uh, uh, that can rest on our site, can accommodate one, our site can accommodate one as well, that can rest lot line to lot line and raise more than a hundred feet tall on that site. It was created by the previous commissioner, Robert Moses, and I, I believe that this is a time now for us to look at this critically, because people need housing today. Thank you.
Eric and Bishop, it's a pleasure to see you both today, and to everybody here today. Um, I'm just gonna get right to it, I know this is a sensitive topic, um, this particular project, so I'm just gonna ask everybody to please have respect, um, to each other, and when you're asking questions, to please answer them in respect. Uh, housing is an issue that we want to address within New York City, so every community has to play their part, but also every developer has to play their part as well when they're talking and negotiating with the community. Um, it looks like eight stories isn't what the community wants, it looks like five stories isn't what the developer wants. So hopefully we can come to the table and come up with some good faith negotiations. Uh, with that being said, uh, I'm gonna ask a few questions. Uh, I did see you presenting the chart with the demographic of ethnicity within the community. Um, if I'm not mistaken, because it's a little small, I couldn't really see it.
Yeah.
Um, could you talk about the non-Hispanic black, I think it was at forty-two percent in the community now, you said increased?
If whoever's controlling the screen, you could pull up page eleven of the screen.
It's alright, I couldn't see it anyway.
I'll read it, but, so what's, what, your question was, uh, what percentage is, it doesn't classify, well, it says four point two black, non-Hispanic.
Okay, it's four point two, okay. Uh, the site is currently zoned C eight dash two, which limits development to non-residential use, you mentioned this in your presentation. But want to confirm, if these zoning changes are not approved, what does the applicant envision? I know you stated there could be a building there for twenty-three feet, but what is realistic?
Here are the two realistic
Yeah.
opportunities that have come his way. One is self-storage, self-storage is viable, it's returns, we have it here for you, could show you, does very good returns, he's, he's analyzed it, that's one opportunity. The second opportunity is they run Plaza Auto Mall, so they could obviously put their automobile uh dealership or repair or prep yards or whatever is related to their business there for that. But it's more likely than not that it'll become a self-storage facility, probably of a similar height, if not more than what we're proposing here with a larger bulk.
Thank you. Um, I know council member Jaeger has a few questions in his intro, so I'm gonna make council member Jaeger go. Thank you, council member Jaeger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'm glad that, uh, that you began by talking about the blight on the neighborhood, because in good part, the blight on the neighborhood is caused by the people who you're here representing. I'm glad that the bishop took the time to visit Coney Island Avenue, I wish he would have gone just a few blocks over to see Nostrand Avenue. Nostrand Avenue where the client that you represent has literally destroyed a neighborhood. Destroyed a neighborhood from Avenue L straight to Kings Highway. Taken over two drugstores, a Rite Aid and a CVS, and created parking lots. Taken over synagogue and created his car leasing company. Taken over privately-owned and operated businesses with residents on top, crushed them to the ground, paved it over, and put his, uh, used car rental lot. While he, at the same time, is banging on the doors of homes on East Twenty-Ninth Street to try to buy them so that he can increase the size of his parking lot. We have dark holes in our neighborhood created by your client. That's the blight that exists. Mr. Palatnik and I visited Coney Island Avenue, and he took great joy in telling me what a disgusting neighborhood I represent. The, the street is disgusting, he said, "Councilman, don't you want this cleaned up?" And I said, "Eric, it's your client's property that this filth is in front of." Your client has owned this property, in your words to me, for forty years, and it is disgusting. He doesn't take care of the street, and then you come here and you tell us what a disgusting avenue, Coney Island Avenue is. The homes across the street that you pointed to and said, "Well, couldn't there be something better there?" There are real people living in those homes, real people who make up the demographic mix of our neighborhood. Latino, Bangladeshi, Pakistani, black, real people. And in your view, that doesn't belong there because they can go up so high. So why not, across the street as well, tear it down and build up seven, eight stories on that side? So why not, across the street as well, tear it down and build up seven, eight stories on that side, where it is allowed? Real people in our neighborhood, real people live in a low-rise neighborhood. One, two, and three family homes, and they have made this their home. And they've made this their home not because Robert Moses sent them there. The zoning that was drawn is always subject to the discretionary action of the council. But it is discretionary for a reason. And the reason is because those of us who were elected represent neighborhoods. There is nobody in this council who will tell you that I have said no to a single project that has come before this council. This is, I have been here five years, one month, and ten days. I have never said no to a project in my neighborhood. We have built in Borough Park six, seven, eight stories. We've done it in the Bensonhurst part of my neighborhood. We've done it in the Midwood part of my neighborhood. We've done it for clients of yours, Eric. And my opposition is the height. Not "don't build," not "don't build." So when you tell us that every neighborhood needs apartments, and our neighborhood needs apartments, and you bring strangers into our neighborhood to tell us what we need, and I appreciate being schooled by other people from other neighborhoods to tell us what it is we need in our neighborhood, what we're telling you is the same thing. We also need housing, but there is responsibility in development. We don't build towers on top of people's homes. We don't do that anywhere in this city. It's a big city, and it's a different kind of city, and a lot of different neighborhoods. And the city is made up of neighborhoods. And when we have a neighborhood that is a typical low-rise neighborhood where we can welcome apartment buildings because we do have apartment buildings, there is a responsibility to develop it in a way that fits into the neighborhood. So let's talk a little bit about what it is that, that, that your client has done in terms of, I haven't asked a question yet, so don't worry about the mic, to our neighborhood, and why it is that there are a lot of people who feel he can't be trusted. And why a lot of people feel, "Look, if he wants to build five stories, that's great, and, and we'll try to welcome that and, and try to hold him to promises that he made." But he's not been somebody whose promises have been trustworthy. He has ruined, ruined the Nostrand Avenue corridor between Avenues L and Kings Highway, Avenue N, Avenue M, Avenue N, Avenue O, Kings Highway. He's ruined them, destroyed them, destroyed them for profit, his own profit. Altruistic was a word that was used here today. I, I, I tried very hard to be, to, to hold my face from laughing. He's not altruistic. Giving out turkeys on Thanksgiving is very nice, but he's not altruistic. He has destroyed a neighborhood. And now he proposes to do similar destruction on Coney Island Avenue. Nobody is saying that we want a Staples instead of housing. We don't. And if Staples has to go, that's fine. But we didn't want to lose a Rite Aid, and we didn't want to lose a CVS two blocks away from each other because your client's greed forced those businesses out. We didn't want to lose all the small businesses along Avenue M between East Twenty-Ninth Street and Nostrand Avenue, my childhood barber shop being one of them, that was bought out, crushed to the ground, and had a paved parking lot put over it. Literally paving paradise to put up parking lots is your client's business model. So when you tell us that the other option for him is either a self-storage or building his auto mall, then don't come here. This is the place of where discretionary actions are granted, not where threats and bullying is happening. Don't tell us that if you, if you don't do this, then this is what's coming your way. Do whatever you want. We're offering an opportunity to welcome apartments into our neighborhood. We do need them, but it has to be responsible. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
No, I just want you to actually, I know you have some questions.
I haven't asked a question, I'm not going to ask one.
You don't want, you have no questions?
None, because he said everything we needed to say. I just needed to clarify and put it into the proper context.
Thank you. We have a lot of people signed up to testify, just I want to make sure we get to everybody. So I don't think there's any more questions or comments for this applicant panel, so you guys are excused.
Thank you.
So we have a few people to testify, so I'm going to make a few announcements regarding that. We have a few of you here in person. We're going to call you in panels and a few waiting online. Thanks for your patience. So for those of you that are here to testify, please know that you'll be calling panels of four or five. If you're a member of the public signed up to testify on the proposal, please stand by when you hear your name being called and prepare to speak when Chair says that you may begin. Please also know that once all panelists in your group have completed their testimony remotely, you will be removed from the meeting as a group, and the next group of speakers will be introduced. Once removed, participants may continue to view the livestream broadcast of this hearing on the council website. Sorry, we will now hear from the first panel, and we're going to call you to, if the Chair wants to read the names of the panels in person, so you can set up and we can call you.
Yes, I'm going to call on Tiara Williams, Alvaro Gonzalez, Reverend Frank Mason, and Pastor Beard. Beard? Beard? The Beard? All right, Pastor Beard, you could come up there.
You can come up there and we'll-
Members of the public will be given two minutes to speak. I will be cutting everybody off at two minutes. I'm so sorry, there's a lot of people signed up to testify today. All right, so you will be given two minutes to speak. Please do not begin until the Sergeant-at-Arms has started the clock. So first, I'm going to start with Pastor Beard. Pastor Beard? You may begin.
Good morning, my name is Pastor Beard. I'm Associate Pastor of Coney Island Cathedral. And I've often heard of projects coming to my community with promises of progress. But it's rare to find a project that is focused on affordable housing. As an advocate for my community, we fight for fair, equitable housing every day to foster social, economic, and community advancement. However, it is impossible without stable housing. I strongly believe that this development will be part of a sovereign housing crisis in our neighborhood. Additionally, this project will benefit our community and residents because it will generate opportunities for economic and social growth. It will not only bring affordable housing, but jobs, retail space, and significant facelift among Coney Island Avenue. In my opinion, this is more than just a development. It is a much-needed housing solution for our neighborhood. And to add, it would be an upgrade to what we have now.
Thank you, Pastor Beard. Next is Reverend Frank Mason.
My name is Reverend Frank Mason. I'm the Senior Pastor of the Christ Temple United Baptist Church. As an advocate for my community, I am very concerned about the lack of affordable housing that has been made available to our community. In order to keep up with the growing needs of our community, we need more housing and a secure interest and investments into our community. That is why I'm in support of the eighteen-eighty, eighteen-eighty-eight Coney Island Avenue project. The eighteen-eighty, eighteen-eighty-eight Coney Island Avenue project has the potential to be a real game changer in our community. This project has many community benefits, including retail jobs, opportunity, affordable housing, options that will help generate revenue for the small businesses and force the economic growth, which is a step in the right direction. We need new, smart, and creative development in our community. This project checks all those boxes and help improve the quality of life for the whole community. I am confident that the eighteen-eighty, eighteen-eighty-eight Coney Island Avenue project will be a blessing to our growing community and fully support this project. On behalf of myself and the Christ Temple United Baptist Church, we support the rezoning of the eighteen-eighty, eighteen-eighty-eight Coney Island Avenue projects and ask that you consider its approval. I'd like to say thank you for all of you, for your time and consideration. Also have with me letters that's been signed from, letters from other people in our community that was not able to be here because of working. So we are definitely in support of the project.
Thank you, Reverend Mason.
Thank you, and we will take your letter, so we can include them on the record.
Next I will have Tiara Williams. Tiara, you may begin.
Good morning, excuse my voice, but thank you for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Tiara Williams, and I'm a proud six-year member of Local Seventy-Nine and a former resident of District Forty-four. I grew up with my grandparents and enjoyed walks on Coney Island Avenue to get a kosher pickle with my grandparents and the frequent visits to various bakeries in the area. The trips to Midwood and Morrow to watch high school games are some of my most pleasant memories there that I had as a child. At the age of seven, my grandfather passed away. Four years later, my grandmother fell ill as she fought to keep her apartment. Sadly, she died when I was fourteen. My aunt tried keeping her apartment, and she was pushed out of one, because she was pushed out of the one that she had directly upstairs. She could only maintain for a few years. The rent increases on these old apartments were heavy burdens. I had no choice but to move into my mother's already crowded apartment in Flatbush, which is a very different and much more complicated area. Then and now, as decision-makers in New York City, you have the responsibility to build affordable housing. We need to create housing opportunities for the people who cannot afford market-rate apartments, like my aunt, my grandmother, and my grandfather. We need to create families sustaining jobs as well when we consider building these apartments for the members of those communities. These opportunities can help shape a child's future that they don't have to heal from. It's very important that we all do our fair share of creating housing that doesn't burden a family in young or old air, or old age, excuse me. Fair meaning inclusive to the whole hundred of the said community, not just a percentage of the whole. It's essential to create jobs for those people that help those people as well to dictate their financial future. Eighteen-eighty allows both, and I support the project's eight-story plan. An eight-story is not only financially viable, but it offers more affordable units than any other project in District Forty-four in the last ten years. The more this project offers, the less families fall into unfortunate situations as mine did. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Next I have Alvaro Gonzalez. Alvaro, you may begin.
Hello, thank you for the opportunity to testify. My name is Alvaro Gonzalez. I'm a proud six-year member of Local Seventy-Nine, and I am here to testify in favor of the rezoning of, located at eighteen-eighty Coney Island Avenue. When I started in the construction industry, I used to work non-union in the Midwood neighborhood. I worked on apartments, houses, commercial buildings. Through my time working there, what I thought was first a good opportunity, I came to realize I was being exploited. I worked with no safety standards or living wages. Accidents on job sites always went unreported. We were always pushed to the point where it became dangerous. During demolition phases, there was never any test done to see if there was asbestos or anything harmful. PPE was rarely provided. Something as simple as wearing your heart hat was a rare sight. While industry safety standards have increased, many construction companies in Midwood still do not follow basic safety regulations. By working and earning low wages, I could never have afforded to live in one of those apartments where I was working on. Buying meals and transportation for work took away twenty-five percent of my income, while making a hundred, while making around five-hundred-and-fifty dollars a week. I used to struggle paying twelve-hundred dollars in rent. Healthcare, healthcare coverage was not even an option as I was quoted two-hundred-and-fifty dollars a month for basic coverage. I could not afford it, nor was it offered to me through my job. When I got hurt, I was told to stay home until I got better, but I was not paid for my time off or company offered to pay my medical bills. Today, as a union member, I know my rights. There are people in this district who desperately need affordable housing due to their low wages. The project offers real opportunity, good wages, and housing for workers that workers can afford. We need every unit of affordable housing we can get to make our city livable. Please consider my testimony and open the doors to a dignified future by approving this rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jaeger, you have any questions for this panel?
Very brief question. Good morning, Pastor Beard. Just wondering if you can tell us, where is your church located?
Twenty-eight sixteen Memet Avenue.
Okay. And good morning, Reverend Mason, where's your church located?
Twenty-six seventy-eight eighty-sixth Street in the Bensonhurst section of Brooklyn.
Okay, beautiful neighborhoods, both. So those, those are about a twenty-minute drive, twenty-five-minute drive from this location. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. That's all that I have in terms of questions. And just in terms of my friends from Local Seventy-Nine, I just want to tell you that in my district, there's not been a single project that has built, that has come before this council that hasn't been a union job, that hasn't been with prevailing wages. Not a single approval has come out of, from me, from my good colleagues on this committee or from Land Use Committee that hasn't been a union job. This will be a union job. If they want to build a five-story building, they can get started tomorrow. They just don't want to do that. The people who are denying Local Seventy-Nine good jobs right now are the people who asked you to come here today, not the council. They're the ones who are taking these jobs away. That's all from me, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Jaeger. This applicant panel is excused. I will call up the next applicant panel. Albert Charell. Rayun Yakov. Excuse me if I mispronounce your name. Eli Katy. Joseph Mitraini. And Beth Antib. Do we have a Beth? Beth? I'm going to make you go first, Beth.
Hi, thank you so much for your time and attention. I really, I really appreciate it.
No problem.
It's sort of a thrill of mine to participate in the sort of civic, you know, American situation. Very, very, very great honor and responsibility. First of all, I'd like to say that, so sorry. So first of all, I'd like to say that I am unofficially representing the six-hundred-and-fifty signators to this very quickly put-together petition. Thank you, petition, all of whom are strongly against this variance. Almost all of whom are very local residents, each of whom has their own personal view and personal reasons for feeling the way they do and not wanting this monstrosity, monolithic thing built in our neighborhood. I really respect the citywide need for affordable housing. And the fact that this owner has not been able to figure out a way to make a five-story building that does fit within the context of our neighborhood, the fact that he hasn't been able to figure out a way to make it work financially for him does not in any way mean that making it bigger so that it's of benefit to him. That, no, that doesn't make any sense. He's in it for the money, and I certainly respect the American dream of owning real estate and making that of financial benefit. That, that's wonderful. But, but not on our backs, not by ruining our neighborhood.
Thank you, Beth. The next person to testify is Joseph. Joseph, please state your name for the record, and you may begin.
Joseph Mitraini.
Thank you.
So there's a few things that I'd like to say. She mentioned that we do have six-hundred-and-fifty people that are opposed to this project, oppose. Do not want it, people that live in a neighborhood, people that live in the blocks around this area that know what kind of, what this is going to do to the neighborhood. So I just want to quickly mention that and make sure you guys, we have it on the record that there are six-hundred-and-fifty people opposed to it. I also want to mention that the Community Board voted on this project, and they turned it down. There, there are the people that live on the, on the, on, in the neighborhood and on the ground and know what the people, the community, needs. This is not something that we need. This monstrosity is not something that we need. They want to put two-hundred-and-thirty apartments. That's over a thou, easily over a thousand people in our backyards. Where is the infrastructure for that? Where is the, the plan for that? The kids going to school, the, the, the supermarkets, there's, there's no plan for that. It's just going to create a huge mess on top of it already congested- It's just going to create a huge mess on top of an already congested area. We're living in this area for over twenty years, paying taxes. We are the ones that made the neighborhood. And now they want to shove this project down our necks. It's not fair. It's not fair to anybody. It really is not. If this was a much smaller footprint, much more, smaller scale, we'd be, we'd, we'd want it. We want affordable, good housing, but it's not the case. What is the benefit for the neighborhood? What benefits are the neighborhood getting from this, from this project? They haven't said one thing the neighborhood is getting from this project. A building like this should be built in a different area and not infringe on our neighborhood. That's all I got to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Joseph. The next person to testify is Eli Cady.
Good morning, Chair and Councilmembers. My name is Eli Cady. I looked at the environmental assessment that the, that they proposed. There's many inconsistencies over there, but one of the things is that the traffic, they went and reported the traffic. If you look at the traffic, and it was on January seventh, two thousand twenty-one, right after, right when the second COVID wave came about. Everybody was home. January seventh is also the Greek Orthodox Christmas, which is in our neighborhood. Also, there's a Greek Orthodox Church. Many people stayed home. You had, in one hour, four hundred and seventy-five cars and taxis, seven hundred and thirty-nine light trucks and SUVs, forty-nine medium trucks, eighteen heavy trucks, ninety-four buses. That's one thousand three hundred and seventy-five vehicles in one hour between seven-thirty and eight-thirty AM on a day that's supposed to be no traffic at all. One of the causes of the traffic is because there's too many people. We are bursting out our seams. Another thing in that environmental assessment, it says that the schools are at a hundred and four percent capacity, the public schools in our area. Where are you going to put one thousand people? They say that it's going to be a hundred and fifty children. Most probably is going to be more. It's about eight percent more. You're going to overburden, and this was two years ago, you're going to overburden our public school systems. Our streets are dangerous. Plaza Automall parks their cars at seventeen ninety-seven in an ambulance zone. They park their cars without plates, and over there, people that are trying to get out in ambulants, they have to go out in double park. They are causing danger. Please, please.
Thank you.
Keep us safe.
Thank you. The next person will be Albert. Albert, you may begin.
Thank you for having us here, giving us opportunity to make our voices heard. It's very much appreciated. There are many reasons for my opposition to this proposed zoning change. For the sake of the two-minute time, we'll only be able to mention a few. We're happy to speak about it further later. The first thing is the traffic. The existing traffic in and around that area creates gridlock. Taking the children to school just four blocks away could take forty-five minutes on an average morning. Anybody who lives in that area knows that. This proposed building would be between Avenue O and Avenue P. Avenue O, as it goes towards Coney Island Avenue, does not go through past Coney, as it is a one-way street on coming the other way. So anybody who is going up Avenue O towards Coney Island Avenue needs to make a right turn, which would be right where this building would be, which would take up an entire, almost, you know, an entire city block, or make a left, which is nearly impossible because of the oncoming traffic the other way. The existing infrastructure and traffic in our area cannot support ton more cars and massive influx of approximately a thousand new residents in a one-block area. As a lifelong Brooklynite, we live in a diverse, multicultural, hardworking, family-oriented community. And I stress the word "family." Indeed, almost all the residents in our area, regardless of background, race, um, religion, are all families, many of them are large families. When reviewing the proposed plans for this building, it seems there was zero care taken to make it livable for the local residents of our community. All the apartments are tiny, even with the changes that Mr. Plotnik proposed, and don't have many, don't have enough bedrooms. While in our area, it's typically large families who live in the area, they need three, four, or five-bedroom apartments. So I understand the goal of the city is to provide more housing and affordable housing, but care should be taken to put it in the right spot and to make it suitable for residents of the community. This building doesn't do any of that. Should this zoning change be approved, it would open the floodgates to buildings like this on every block, up and down Coney Island Avenue and cross streets, literally overwhelming the single-family homes and multifamily homes of people that have been living here, living in this area for generations. Indeed, if I may just finish ten more seconds, myself, I am a fourth-generation Brooklynite. Uh, my great-grandfather was an immigrant who came to this country over from Syria, and my children are fifth generation. So I've been living in this area for quite a long time, and I, I know what we need. This is not what we need. If I respectfully ask you to stand with the local community, the local, um, Community Board, and the local council members who know what's best for this community and oppose this zoning change. Thank you.
Next we have, uh, excuse me for a mispronouncing name, Ruin. Ruben Young.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
As a grandfather, when I receive a phone call from my grandchildren, they tell me, Sabah, how do we cross the street? Which way should we go? Any one of you come, came in the morning or in the afternoon when kids coming out of school or going into school? Did you ever see them frightened and can barely walk on a green light? We're not talking about red. We're talking about green. They cannot pass the street. They call me, can you come pick us up? We're coming to a point that, you know, they trying to fit a fifty-three-foot trailer into dead-end street and tell them, make a turn. You can make a turn. You can turn, but we can't. Where do we draw the line? Where does it stop? Where and when? Has to be, some, some common sense over here. You representing somebody, I, I get it. Something has to be built over there. We get it. But it got to make sense for everyone, not just for one side. Has, has to go both sides. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Jaeger, do you have a question for this panel? This panel is excused. Thank you so much. Uh, do we have anyone else here who wants to testify on this item? If not, we're going to move to the ones that we have remote.
So we're, again, just a reminder, we'll call you in panels of four, excuse me, panels of four, and we'll ask you to unmute to make sure your microphone is working. Um, and we will, um, call for the first panelist, Mordecai Sharabi, Meyer Eldanov, and apologies if I'm mispronouncing names, Jacob Kaplan, and Jack Braha. And we'll have Mordecai Sharabi as the first witness.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Hi, my name is Mordecai Sharabi, and I live on East Seventh Street. I do not live on East Tenth. We're planning to build a building. I live on East Seventh. I'm a rabbi of a shul, a community. I have over sixty members in the shul. And we all suffer daily from parking. I come back a night after giving classes. I cannot find parking. I don't believe that if you believe in, if, I don't believe if you will build a building with so many apartments and so many new people coming down with the cars to park, there's no way where they're going to park. If not that they're planning to give three floors for parking. But if we now, where we live, I live on East Seventh, I do not live on East Tenth. So East Seventh, there's no parking. East Eighth, there's no parking. East Ninth, there's no parking. East Tenth, there's no parking. I go to East Twelve, East Thirteen, East Fourteenth, there's no parking. And I want to add on another fifty apartments, another hundred apartments, another four hundred apartments? I just don't believe it makes any sense. It's going to ruin the community from A to Z. I just don't see how it's going to help anybody that lives in the area. I understand people need places to live. They need houses. I respect that. We all need it. But don't put in an area that it's already not, has no space. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Meyer Eldanov.
Thank you for this opportunity. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, first off, uh, I'd like to ask for the reverends that came today, if you have an attendance of maybe, I'm going to guess, two hundred, two hundred and fifty people that come to your church on a Sunday morning, one day a week, would you be willing to flatten your buildings, put everybody on the first floor for that one few or few hours on a Sunday morning, and build an eight-story project on top of you? How would the rest of your residents of your area, how would they like that? That's one question. I mean, that's exactly what's happening to us. I don't know about complaints that have been happening on Coney Island Avenue for what the lawyer has pointed out. I don't, I do see garbage. I do see cars. It's kind of par for the course, but it's not something that is disgusting, as he had placed it, or anything that's unsightly or blight of the community. I really oppose such questions, such statements. And do you have a list of people that have opposed over the years for the conditions of that area? When I need to go somewhere, I walk right by. Nobody says boo to me. And I don't have a problem walking down there. There's garbage because there's always garbage. And where you're placing this new building, how many more mom-and-pop stores are you going to be able to fit there? If you would, if the city wants to, or the state wants to build eight hundred thousand additional um, housing units, and affordable housing units, and I may add, affordable housing units, I understand that it's important, but you have to understand that the price of housing and rent in our area is a, is, is based on supply and demand. There's a great demand, and therefore the prices are high. And that's an economic property that works everywhere in the world, supply and demand. If you would like to have a lot of housing, go to an open area. I'm not saying specifically this coming area that I'm going to mention the name, like Floyd Bennett Field, very wide area, that the, that the state or the city would like to. They can build thousands of housing units over there and build groceries and, and, and businesses and supermarkets and tailor shops and all kinds of things that would support. Sorry? And, and be able to support a new community instead of building on top of an existing community. Everybody out there who wants to have this project should think, do you want an eight-story building in addition to where you live now? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Uh, the next person that we'll have, uh, present is Jack Kaplan. Jack, you may begin.
Hello, good morning. Thank you everyone for listening. I have the unique, uh, opportunity to both be someone who lives four blocks away as well as being the vice-chair of Community Board Twelve, which represents the area. Um, everyone knows that Brooklyn needs, needs housing, desperately, especially in parts of Midwood. And we're at the crossroads here. Either we're going to let people not from our community buy out and build out our community, or we're going to stand strong and hold the developers accountable to build housing that looks and feels right for our community. We need to choose people of a profit, the backbone of the community, over the big accounts of the developers. When you have a massive amount of local people, the local councilman, the community board, all voting unanimously against this project, it brings me to question why people not from the neighborhood are coming here and supporting the project. We've seen this before in the community boards, and usually it has to do with people getting something on the side to show up to speak. We've seen this multiple times. We need housing in our community, and someone like myself who needs to live as well, one-in-two-bedroom apartments doesn't fit our community, doesn't fit the large amount of community. As you've seen before, the demographic makeup is mostly Jewish people. Um, it's mostly Hispanics, and it's mostly Asians, which are our Muslim community, which all have large families. One-in-two-bedroom apartments don't cut it. One-in-two-bedroom apartments are the most profitable apartments, which is why that's what they're building. And we need to build for our community, not for profit. Not, not for profit, people can make money. But we need to build for our community, in our community, that fits right with the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next person to present is Jack Braha.
Good morning. Do you guys hear?
Yes, we can. You may begin.
Thank you. Thank you for giving us time and, uh, allowing us to voice our opinion on a matter that, uh, affects the neighborhood at large. First off, uh, I myself have been living in this neighborhood for over four decades. I have a very good, uh, beat on the community and what transpires daily within the community. Um, I believe that, uh, in, at the beginning, when the lawyer, uh, spoke for about twelve minutes, he did not address the key issues that have to be addressed. And it's not an emotional thing. It's a serious thing. It has to do with parking, safety, garbage, and all that fun stuff that comes with, uh, you know, a hundred-plus apartments that are being developed. Uh, we keep hearing about affordable housing, but no one has said how many of the apartments are affordable housing? What is the percentage of this big structure that is being built that is going to have affordable housing? No one has mentioned that. Is it twenty of them? Is it forty of them? So we don't believe that the reason for this project is in the benefit of the neighborhood and affordable housing, but rather, as has been said prior, it is a business decision. The lawyer himself has said very clearly that five stories doesn't work because of the interest rates. Uh, I implore you to vote in a new president, that hopefully that, you know, will have better interest rates like we did a few years ago. And then five stories will be a profitable center. You also have the ability to take a, a mortgage at this time and then refinance at a later time. Your decisions can't be based on a business, um, practicality or the profitability of a, of a finance situation. Mortgages go up and go down. The neighborhood stays in constant. Those who live behind, and I do not, uh, feel, will be totally disturbed for years. Between foundation and shoring, uh, who knows what will come with that? We're not looking to have an earthquake in our neighborhood. The large, the size of the slot is very, very large. As you've seen in the neighborhood, we've had some issues on.
I'm expired. Thank you, Jack. Uh, thank you, Jack, for your testimony.
Thank you.
Um, and just for the record, I do believe that the applicant team did provide, uh, some numbers of the affordable housing that will be there. Um, and I think you can find that on the record, um, if you look back. But we appreciate your testimony in this applicant, uh, panel. Councilmember Jaeger, do you have any questions for this panel?
Very brief, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
To one of the panelists, uh, Mr. Kaplan, if Mr. Kaplan's still there. Uh, Mr. Kaplan said he was a member of the Community Board Twelve. He's actually the vice-chair of Community Board Twelve. Um, and I just wanted to ask if he can tell us for the record if he recalls any time, uh, at least in the last five years, that Community Board Twelve has rejected a strictly residential proposal to build in our community board.
I believe that, uh, Mr. Kaplan has left the meeting.
Mr. Kaplan has left the building. Okay, all right.
Thank you, Councilmember Jaeger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Uh, the next panel that we're going to call is Elizabeth Denny's and Mark Grepo.
Elizabeth, you'll go first, but again, just a reminder that for those of you who are testifying online, please stay on the meeting in case a council member has questions. The council members have questions for you. So Elizabeth Dennis will be our first speaker on this next panel.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Denny's, and I live just two miles north of the project along Coney Island Avenue on the other side. Um, I'm speaking in favor of the project today. Um, it's well matched in scale for the surrounding neighborhood. I regularly take the B sixty-eight bus um, to get around, and I, I see, you know, buildings that look like this on both sides of the street. Um, I also think it's a really important step towards relieving the pressures the housing crisis brings to our area. Rents are skyrocketing throughout our neighborhood, with many folks having experienced huge rent increases in two thousand twenty-two, putting them into the severely rent-burdened category. Um, and these new a hundred and ninety homes with forty-nine permanently affordable, um, is really what we need. It's the kind of development every council member should want in their district, a mixed-use development with the ample affordable housing well matched to the incomes in the neighborhood as presented. Um, you know, we're suffering in this area because we're, you know, it's, it's an area that hasn't built a lot of affordable housing or even housing. Um, and it's surrounded by other areas, um, that have the same problem. And you don't need to look to the experiences that I've seen with my neighbors and throughout this area, but also it's directly reflected by Community Board Twelve's, um, district need statement, where additional affordable housing is listed as their top need. Yet, the city, the council district has only created, um, Council District Forty-Four, a hundred and sixteen units of affordable housing since two thousand fourteen, and this project alone would bring nearly double the number of affordable units within Community Board Twelve's boundaries as well. Um, it'll revitalize the immediate neighborhood, replacing the one-story staples that's already closing and a large parking lot. Um, much, you know, much-needed housing. Um, in addition to my experiences living in the area, I'm also the co-leader of the Open in New York's Mid-Brooklyn Chapter, and our members and supporters have sent over a hundred and thirty-two letters in favor of this project. Um, because we know it will help, you know, reduce the, uh, the housing crisis that's happening in, not just this area, but throughout the city. Um, and I thank you so much for allowing me the time to speak about this project, and I really hope the subcommittee votes to approve the a hundred and ninety more, very badly.
Thank you, Elizabeth. The next person to speak is Mark Grepo. Mark, you may begin.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Mark Grepo, and I reside in District Forty-Four.
I'm, uh, testify, testifying in support of rezoning. On, uh, eighteen eighty Coney Island Avenue. I've been living in this district for fifteen years. Uh, like me, the majority of the people that live in this district are renters. Living in an apartment that's affordable and rent stabilized has been key to making sure I can provide for my wife and two kids. As a member of Local Seventy-nine, I'm able to receive a living wage and benefits. Thanks to these two factors, I'm able to create beautiful memories in this district alongside with my family. Today, I enjoy the financial stability to not have to worry about living paycheck to paycheck. I'm able to take vacations, personal days off, and to contribute to my local economy by spending money at the local businesses. Not having to worry about paying a high rent has allowed me to concentrate on building a future for my family and concentrate on other things. People in this district deserve affordable housing and living wages, which both would be generated by this project. With my testimony today, I hope to, you vote in support of this project and provide as many people as possible with the same opportunities I was provided. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mark. And, uh, Councilmember Yeager, do you have any questions for this panel?
Just very briefly, uh, Mr. Grippo, I too am a resident of, uh, the forty-fourth council district. And, uh, like you, I too am a renter, I'm a renter my whole life. Um, but I want to make sure that you heard what I said earlier to your colleagues from Local Seventy-nine. Uh, no, never, never has there been a job that got approved by this, by me, by the subcommittee, by the land use committee, by this council. In my district, that was not a union job, this is going to be a union job if the developer wants to build. He does not want to build and that's why the union's not getting jobs. And I just want to make sure that you understand that the impediment to Local Seventy-nine getting good, safe union jobs on Coney Island Avenue. Is because the developer doesn't want them, not because the council doesn't. Um, that's it for me, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, and, uh, I'm just gonna ask if we could allow Jack Kaplan to come back in. So, uh, Councilmember Yeager could ask him a question, I believe we lost him. Uh, Jack is back, uh, Councilmember Yeager, you're.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. Uh, and, uh, we are, we are still working out the kinks of the technology and we're three years in, but it works sometimes. Uh, Mr. Kaplan, thank you for being here, I, you, you are a, the vice chair of Community Board Twelve. And my question to you is, um, because we have, we have had in our community board many, many multiples of hearings. On housing proposals and various kinds of proposals, not just housing, but commercial and all kinds of development throughout our district. To your recollection, is there ever a time that a strictly residential proposal in our community board? At any time in the last five, six years, has been rejected by our community board?
No, the only things, the only times we talk and developers come to our community board. To hear from what the community board wants, we always reiterate the same thing. We always reiterate the same thing, that we want housing for our community, in our community. When people come to build, when developers come to build for profit and not for the need of the community. What that does is displaces people who grew up in the community, who spent their lives in the community, whose grandparents, great-grandparents, or, or people who just came to the community to, you know, a few years earlier. They get displaced when developers build for people outside of the community for profit. Versus building people in, for building for people inside the community for what the community needs.
Okay, so just to be clear, the no vote from Community Board Twelve on eighteen eighty Coney Island Avenue. On this project is the first strictly residential, uh, proposal that received a no vote. There has never been a no vote, to your recollection, in the last five years or six years, that, for a strictly residential proposal. Uh, that received the no vote, this is unique in, in our community board, is that correct?
Correct, in the five, six years I'm at the community board, maybe even a little bit longer, maybe seven years now. Um, we have never voted no on a project. Over here, the, the local community came out unanimously. We had, I think, forty-five people signed up to speak at the community board hearing. And they all voted, uh, I think there were three people who voted in favor of it and the rest of the community board voted against it. And about forty-five people came out to speak against the project, uh, at the community board hearing.
Okay, thank you very much and, uh, want to give it back to Mr. Chair so we can get it on with the order of the day, thank you for coming back into the meeting.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you so much, the next panel I'm going to call up is Isaac Mulgravy, uh, Miriam Klein, Elay De Nino. And Marvin Schangler.
And just a reminder, since some of you are on the phone, so it's star six on your phone to unmute.
First, uh, to begin is Isaac Mulgravy. Isaac, if you can hear me, you may begin. And please, uh, start your video if you're here on Zoom, please.
Hi, can you see me okay?
Yes, we can see you, hear you, go ahead.
Okay, great, thanks, uh, yeah, my name is Isaac Mulgravy. Um, I do live within the area on the East Tenth Block, which, uh, has been, you know, the, the opposing block. But I want to say that the reason I'm opposed to this, to the structure that's being built on East Tenth. Is nothing to do with it interfering with, which some might say my light, my view. It, that's all irrelevant to me, I'm closer to the corner where it's not, mind you, it's almost one block long, the structure. And I'm not in a direct lane back of it, so it's not why I'm opposed it. Something I've just been watching and noticing and I heard, you know, the prior people that spoke in the panel. It, it became, granted, everybody here wants building, wants families to move in, wants a big structure. But all within reason and within limits of the community. Everybody, you know, is mentioning five stories, it looks like without a doubt, everybody's for that, which, uh, the councilman and everybody else had mentioned. So, they're not saying no to this project, they're just saying do it with, you know, with the way it'll fit. And not just with the way that the dollars will fit within the, you know, developer's pocket. Rather, it'll have to flow with the community, you know, we've heard from five or six people, I believe, um, that spoke. Mind you, all of them were within a twenty-five to thirty-minute drive just to get to this property. You know, at, at soonest, I would say, so, I don't know how relevant that, you know, that, that might be. People that are speaking here, people that are saying to build the five stories are people that live within the area. People that understand the traffic, I am very well affected by the traffic. I live, again, right in back of it, that part does, uh, you know, affect me more than anything. Um, me, parking, not a question. Um, driving distance to Ocean Parkway to Coney Island, so, you know, minimum thirty minutes just to reach any one of those main intersections. It's a big issue, people, they're, they're not coming and making up topics on why they're opposed it. They're saying valid reasons on why the structure doesn't fit. You can't build a city-long block, one hundred ninety-five feet in, in the air. And, and say it won't affect the people in the neighborhood, so just, you know, build within the neighborhood's reasons as they're asking, is the right thing to do.
Thank you, Isaac.
Thank you so much.
Next, I'm gonna have Marion Klein, Marion, you may begin. Uh, Marion, you could press star six, uh, to unmute yourself and you may begin.
Hi, it's Marion, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, it's Marion Klein, thank you for having me. Um, I am very strongly opposed to this, uh, for safety reasons of the whole neighborhood. Um, there are not enough streets for parking, for traffic. If there's an ambulance that has to get through, um, it can take, it's a matter of minutes, it's a matter of life and death. Um, there's just, there's just no room, it, it's got to go somewhere else. Thank you.
Thank you so much, uh, next we will. Next we will have Elay De Nino. Elay, if you could hear me, please unmute yourself and you may begin.
Do we have, I think we're having trouble with him, so we can call on the next one and then we can come back to him.
Okay, the next person I'll call on is Marvin, uh, Schlenger. Uh, Marvin, if you can hear me, please unmute yourself and you may begin. You could press star six to unmute yourself and you may begin.
Hello?
Yes, we can.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, uh, my name is Marvin Schlenger. I live just two blocks away on East Ninth Street and have been living here for thirty-six years. Um, one of the things that I find remarkable about those people who have been, uh, speaking in favor of this project. Uh, including the members of the clergy, that none of them live in the immediate area. Um, they're speaking about people who are, uh, churches that are twenty minutes away. Uh, I don't know exactly where they live, but they live also probably in proximity to the churches. So they are not affected by anything that they're saying, uh, now. It's the people here that are affected. And I'd like to also speak about something that's very, very different than anybody else has spoken, it's the issue of crime. Um, there have been statistics, they're available online, studies that have been done by the John Jay, uh, School of Criminal Justice. That, um, low-income housing has been a breeding ground of crime that has increased. Uh, way above the amount of increase in any other area of the city. And, um, one of the problems that we have over here is there are a lot of children in this area. And I'm speaking as a member of the Jewish community. There are yeshivas in very, very close proximity to the area of this project. These people, because of the dual nature of their program, they have religious studies as well as secular studies. Come home rather late, uh, for the most part, uh, in the dark, a very large part of the year. They have to pass by this particular, uh, proposed project. And there's a concern for their safety. There's a concern for their safety and this is some kind of a concern that really. I'm sorry?
Thank you so much, Marvin, we appreciate your testimony.
Uh, thank you.
The next person we'll call is Elay De Nino, Elay, can you please start your camera and you may begin?
Hey, do you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, but we need you to put your camera on as well.
I'm just trying to find, sorry. I don't know why it's not.
He's okay, okay, Elay, uh, you could go ahead if you're having complications.
Okay, you, you guys can hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Is it better now?
Yes, we can hear you, go ahead.
Okay, I'm a local broker and just wanted to tell everybody that, um. That I understand that the housing is needed, definitely needed. But at the same time, I live in the neighborhood and I know the, how, how congested it is. So I think it has to be done, uh, in a logical way and as everybody has mentioned, it can be done. Um, coming together, maybe making a building a little smaller, less units, and that's what I think.
Thank you, Elay, for your testimony. Uh, this panel is now excused and the next panel I'll be calling up is. Lawrence Dayan, Jane Chawika, Elaine Leiti, and Joyce Chabot. Excuse me if I mispronounced your name, and Lawrence Dayan, if you can hear me, you may begin. You may begin, Lawrence.
Thank you, I just want to thank, uh, uh, this, uh, committee and of course, uh, Councilman Yeager. For his, uh, hard work and his, um, commitment and, uh, uh, love for our community and our neighborhood. I live in the neighborhood, lived there for my whole, uh, my whole life. And, um, uh, the, the key factors, like everybody's talking about, is, uh. Safety, traffic, uh, parking, all the above. It's a, it's a, it's not, uh, a place to put an enormous structure. Of, uh, you know, just countless, uh, uh, apartments and homes. And, uh, it's something that's, um, it's just too large for the spot. So, uh, thank you for your time and again, appreciate everybody's, uh, service to the, uh, to the neighborhood.
Thank you, Lawrence, the next person that will testify is Jane Chakut. Choke, sorry if I mispronounced it. Jane, if you can hear me, please unmute and you may begin.
Hi, um, I'm sure the video's not working, I've lived in this area for, you know, my entire life. Sixty years, we've been living here for generations and the area is, like everyone said, a family area, large families. And the congestion is just unbearable as it is with the traffic. Getting from Ocean Parkway to Coney Island Avenue can take someone fifteen minutes in the morning and it is a thirty-second drive. Adding one thousand people will only serve to heighten that congestion. And it's totally just not a area for this kind of housing, thank you.
Thank you so much, Jane, the next person to testify is Elaine Leiti, Elaine, you may begin.
Looks like she may have dropped off, so we can call on Joyce Chabot, are you there?
Joyce, if you can hear us, you may begin.
I, I can't get out, do you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, okay, hi, thank you for, uh, for hearing me out today. Um, I do appreciate the, uh, need for low-income housing. I think everybody deserves that. But, um, you picked a spot where I don't think you could get a more congested area than Coney Island Avenue between O and P. Uh, it's impossible to drive there, it's, it's just very, very crowded. Um, I agree with, uh, Senator, to Councilman Yeager. A five-story building would be appropriate, a tower would not. Uh, so I stand against the rezoning and stand with the current zoning of the, uh, building code. Um, once again, thank you for hearing me out and, uh, I do appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Yeager, do you have a question for this panel? Uh, thank you so much, this, uh, applicant, uh, team. I'm going to call on Logan Ferris and Asia Thomas, uh, for the next witnesses. If you can hear me, Logan, you may begin.
Great, um, thank you Chair Riley, Councilmember Yeager, and members of the subcommittee for the opportunity to share testimony in support of this project. My name is Logan Ferris and I serve as the political director of Open New York. Open New York is an independent grassroots pro-housing nonprofit. New York is in a housing crisis, over the past two decades, available jobs have grown far faster in the city than the number of homes. Meaning more renters are competing for the same number of apartments. And landlords ho- hold all of the bargaining power, right now, New Yorkers are facing rent increases of up to fifty, sixty, and seventy percent. As rent discounts offered during the pandemic expire. This project would create over two hundred apartments, including at least the income-restricted apartments, both of which are sorely needed in a city facing a severe housing shortage. To put that into perspective, council district forty-four only built a hundred and sixteen units of affordable housing between two, twenty-fourteen and twenty-twenty-one. Meaning this project alone would create more than half the total number of income-restricted units built over the last eight years. The neighborhood around this property is also well primed to accommodate new residents. The zip code in which eighteen eighty, eighteen eighty-eight Coney Island Avenue is located has a high prevalence of supermarket, childcare facilities, and health clinics. And has extremely low crime rates, while resource neighborhoods must do their fair share to build more housing. While we are supportive of this project, the plan two hundred and forty-two parking space is disappointing, especially considering that this project is. A short walk to the express station at Kings Highway. We must build more housing for people, not cars, and cannot continue to encourage or subsidize car use. We ask the commission to recommend a reduction in parking. We are happy to see Speaker Adams' housing agenda to confront the city's housing crisis and now she must act to enact her housing agenda. The city's failure to, failure to produce enough housing has real and direct human consequences, high rents, displacement, segregation, tenant harassment, homelessness, and countless other problems. We cannot address this crisis without building more homes and every neighborhood must do its part. We encourage the commission to vote to approve this project with conditions, thank you for your time.
Thank you, next I'm gonna call Asia Thomas. Do we have Asia Thomas?
Looks like she dropped off the Zoom, so, Councilmember Yeager, do you have any questions for Logan?
No, Chairman, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna call the next, uh, panel. Uh, we have Daniel Satan, uh, David Mazru, Chancy Blumenfusch. And Yeter Solomon. And I'm gonna begin with Daniel Seton. Daniel, if you can hear me, please unmute yourself and you may begin.
Hi, thank you so much, uh, my name is Daniel Seton, I live on East Tenth, between O and P, right beyond the property. Um, I'm opposing of the, of the project, even though, you know, in essence, if they would work with us and not make it seven stories. I would not oppose it, I would be totally okay with it. Um, if it was five, I would be totally okay with it, I, I think affordable housing is very important. I think that we definitely need to help the people that need the help. Um, but it doesn't seem like the developer is all into that because if he was, he would make it from seven to five, which other people have said. So in that case, I am in support of the self-storage and I would definitely be the first customer to join the self-storage, um. to join the self-storage, um, facility if you ever open it up. And again, I oppose the plans, thank you so much.
Thank you David. Uh, excuse me, thank you Daniel, the next person to speak will be David Mazru. David, if you can hear me, please unmute and you may begin.
David, it's star six on your phone to unmute.
Yes, uh, uh, good afternoon, thank you very much for hearing me. I live on East Ten, between P and O, right behind that, that proposed building. Now, uh, we are really very concerned about the zoning change being considered for construction at the eighteen eighty, eighteen eighty-eight Coney Island Avenue. We, big as it is, Coney Island Avenue is a highly traveled thoroughfare and adding it, and adding to it the proposed construction and the added vehicles would make it a nightmare. I have been living in, in this house for over forty years, appro- approximately forty and a half years. And, uh, it is impossible, parking in the area is now extremely difficult. And if not for the fact that we have a small driveway, we would have to park several blocks away if we can find a spot. Visiting to our home from family and friends, including our own grandchildren, has become a problem because of the lack of parking. We shudder to think what would be, what will become if this construction goes through. Because of the above and all other problems that may result from this, we entreat you, please, deny the application to this project. Sincerely yours, myself and my wife included and children and grandchildren. Thank you very much.
Thank you David, next person is Chansey Blumenfurch.
We have Chansey, yeah, I think I see Chansey in the Zoom. Chansey, can you unmute?
Hi, do you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you Chansey.
Hi, how are you? Um, I've been living in the neighborhood for over thirty years. Um, I do have to agree with the councilman, what happened on Ostrand Avenue was a disaster for the neighborhood. Destroyed the whole retail footprint and became actually a large parking lot. I don't know enough about this because I was just notified about this very, very, uh, shortly. Like I was notified about, yeah, last, yesterday, I could not research everything. But if it is the same developer that did Ostrand Avenue, I would be very leery of what the true, uh, intentions are. And if it's really for all of those people seeking affordable housing, which I know is a need, I'm not sure about the intention. So I definitely would be opposed to it until much more is researched and much more is told to the neighborhood that this is going into. That's all.
Thank you. Uh, do we have Yedi Solomon on the call?
I don't believe we do, so, oh. Yeda, can you unmute yourself?
You could press star six and you may begin. Yeda, you could press star six and you may begin. Yeda, are you there? Okay, we'll move on to the next panel. Uh, the next panel I'll, I'll call up will be Sam Levy Cat-Cotty, Mayor Iwani and Jennifer Howfon and Frida Cho- Choka. So sorry for mispronouncing these names. Uh, the first person to, uh, testify will be Sam Levy Cotty.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, go ahead Sam.
Hi, yes, so I live on East Ten, between OMP, behind the, behind the structure, which the, the proposed structure. I can tell you that there are times that I'll get home at eight, nine, ten o'clock at night and I will be circling around within a four-block radius for twenty, thirty minutes and I have to like give up eventually and I'm like, okay, I'm gonna park by King's Highway and then I have to wake up at six forty-five in the morning in order to walk the ten, fifteen minutes in order to get to my car to go and to move it, to put money into the meter. A- and it's just, and I have a very busy day where I'm starting my day at like seven fifteen and I have to run to meeting. It's, everything is just crazy in the area. Um, like everyone is saying, parking is absurd. Traffic can sometimes take fifteen, twenty minutes to go four blocks, five blocks with I, I can only imagine what's gonna happen if you go and you put more. There is a restaurant on Coney Island between OMP, which before they put in their eight, nine parking spots, it used to be even worse the parking. So now if you're gonna put in another two hundred plus families, uh, it's, it's gonna be an absolute nightmare. I'm okay with putting in five stories. I think that, I think that affordable housing is a very important thing. But to go in to put a seven-story monstrosity, eight-story monstrosity is just, it's not the place. And that's all.
Thank you so much, the next person we'll call is Mayor Iwani. Mayor, you may begin.
Thank you very much, thank you, um, Mr. Riley. Uh, I'd like to say I'm a resident of East Tenth Street, um, almost right behind the center of the proposed construction. I feel that constr- uh, building a monstrosity like that is just not what the community needs. We need affordable housing, yes, we're in for that. But affordable housing with three and four bedrooms, that would work, that accommodates our community. And I don't know that tugging on the heartstrings of affordable housing, coming in from places that take twenty minutes to get to and saying that they approved the zoning, what, what are you doing in our neighborhood approving zoning when you don't understand the neighborhood? Uh, what about safety, about traffic and parking, all that, we heard plenty. Um, we also saw a disingenuous photograph or mocked-up photograph of a backyard that's supposed to, uh, accommodate people in the community when there's absolutely no access to anybody but those living in the building. So presenting that as part of the plan is, is totally ridiculous. Uh, we need affordable housing, four stories, garden apartments, three bedrooms, four bedrooms, yes, that would work. That helps the community. Otherwise, build a storage facility or build something else, build medical facilities that accommodate uh, the community, but don't tell us that the city deserves affordable housing of multiple hundreds of units that are one and two-bedroom, which is a, just a total, total disingenuous, unrepresentative proposal and will not help the compute, community at all. So I am firmly against the building. Uh, my personal take would be, I don't want a big fat building right across my, the front of my house. But putting my personal desires aside, there's enough evidence and we have enough people, over six hundred who signed petitions against this because it does not answer the needs of our community. Our community. Affordable housing, larger four, three, four-bedroom, uh, apartments, um, and obviously all the other, all the other concerns being addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next person to testify would be Jennifer Halfon. Jennifer, if you can hear me, please unmute and you may begin. Uh, Jennifer, you can press star six to unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Halfon and I do live in the area. I like to say the infrastructure of the area is mainly for one or two family homes. The, the buildings that do exist in the area are buildings that are pre-war buildings, buildings that maybe now some new buildings are built. But the infrastructure, which means the sewer, the, the, the way that the, the streets are built for the traffic, it's all, it's all made for one and two-family homes. It's not made for huge buildings that are gonna come in and they're gonna have about five or six hundred additional people living in the area. So it does not make it, the, 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 the area is not built for this kind of public. It's made for one or two-family homes. Cars, uh, there's too much cars on the street as it is. On a Friday, you can't travel to King's Highway to Avenue P and it doesn't take you more than one hour. Please, if you wanna build, build something that suits the community. You wanna build a nursing home, maybe, with a two-story or a three-story, but not something that is going to overtake the community. It's not, it's not a building community, it's a one and a two-family community. Thank you.
Thank you. And last, we're gonna have Frida Choka. Frida, if you can hear me, please unmute.
Do you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, how are you? I wanted to thank you for your time, giving our community the time to speak. I've been living on, between OMP my entire life. Everybody knows you cannot drive down Avenue O at any time of the day, it's always traffic. This morning, it took me about thirteen minutes to get from East Ten and between OMP, directly across the building to Coney Island. We were stuck in a massive amount of traffic. My children go to school on Coney Island, there is never a day that there's not double parked cars, insane traffic. I don't even know where six, seven, eight hundred more people could fit into this area. Um, I strongly oppose this, um, but thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Yeager, you have any questions? Uh, the next panel I'm gonna call up is Robert Eisenberg, Marie Chokwa, uh, Linda Dayen and Wayland Hobbs. First person I'm going to call to testify is Robert Eisenberg. Robert, you may begin.
Uh, my name is Robert Eisenberg. I live in Flatbush, Smithwood for over fifty years. Let me first, uh, uh, thank the, uh, uh, zoning board and the council to allow me to, um, um, provide my comments on this proposal. Uh, I've, I've not, I've not had enough time to research the proposal, I only heard about it recently. Uh, I've listened to all of the comments and I can tell you as a resident and, um, and as someone who's, uh, uh, been involved in, in, uh, uh, public things, it's a, it's a terrific thing. Uh, we do need public housing. But this, this, this development, um, this proposal provides for less than, uh, less than thirty percent of the structure will be, uh, available housing. The developer wants to make a great deal of money. He's not interested in, in, uh, building it just for, uh, public housing, uh, affordable housing, otherwise he would agree to build a five-story structure. Uh, the, the, uh, proposal will create massive issues with traffic and parking and simply, um, uh, it, it's simply not in the context of our neighborhood of one and two-family homes. Going straight from McDonald Avenue all the way to Ostrand Avenue. We have many five-story structures, uh, six-story structures on Ocean Parkway. Um, affordable housing again is extremely important, but this develop, thi- this proposal is not addressing that at all. It's simply a, a proposal where the developer wants to make a great deal of money. And I'm certainly opposed to it and it's fairly obvious, I feel that it's a no-brainer. Thank you for your time and allowing me my, uh, comments.
Thank you Robert, the next person to testify will be Marie Choyka. Marie, you may begin.
Uh, I'm Marie Schwaka, uh, thank you everyone for your time. Um, I've, I've lived in the area my entire life and currently live, uh, on East Seventh Street, very close to where this project is. Um, the traffic has always, you know, has never been great in this neighbor- neighborhood, but it's been worsening over the last three to four years. We have a lot of very large families in the neighborhood, means a lot of cars. Um, adding, adding a project like this would dramatically increase in that traffic. Um, someone mentioned earlier that we shouldn't encourage people to drive cars anymore, which is ludicrous in, in this area where we don't have a robust, uh, public transportation system to get people to and from work at their local jobs. Not everyone is traveling to the city for, to Manhattan for their job. Um, so a lot of us need cars, we need the cars to take our kids to the school, um, to, to take away another, adding another few hundred people, uh, and a lot more cars is gonna make things much worse. Thank you.
Thank you, next to testify is Linda Dayen. Linda, if you can hear me, please unmute yourself and you may begin.
Hi, do you hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
Hi, uh, my name is Linda Dayen, I lived in the OMP area my whole life. Um, I strongly oppose this project. Um, the traffic is insane, um, it just keeps getting worse. I drove to my brother's house on East Ten, OMP last week. I think I circled for parking for about thirty minutes and ended up parking blocks away. Um, adding this building is just going to make it worse. Um, there are many children that go to school in the area, my nieces and nephews go to school in the area, they walk home, sometimes in the dark. Um, I think that, um, this project is going to be unsafe. Um, cause tons of traffic, I think someone mentioned ambulances, uh, can't get through. Um, I, 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 I strongly oppose this, thank you.
Thank you, and lastly, we'll have Bishop Way- Wayland Hobbs.
Yes, thank you. Uh, I'm here in support of the project. Uh, we hear the governor even now talking about how the New York state is growing in job opportunities, but places to live is not there. And so we need affordable housing that will help to keep our Brooklyn, Coney Island what it is. Um, I have many members, although our church is not directly in that area, but I have members that come from Long Island, from New Jersey and all parts of Brooklyn. And New York needs more affordable housing. I'm in support of it, I think it'll give people an opportunity for better living and so I support it.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Yeager? Uh, thank you, uh, this panel is excused, the next panel I'm gonna call up is Seema Stein. Uh, Seema, if you can hear me, please unmute yourself and you may begin. Seema Stein, and I'm gonna call again Yeda Solomon, 'cause I still see Yeda's in the chat. Uh, Seida, if you're calling in, please press star six to unmute yourself. Okay, I think we lost Seida. Uh, Yeda Solomon, Yeda, if you're still here, please unmute yourself and you may begin. Okay, I don't believe we have, uh, neither advocates, uh, council.
Um, Chair, so what we'll do now, we'll do a last call for those of you who are still in the Zoom that have not testified yet. If you can either raise your hand using the Zoom function or if you're calling in via phone, do a star nine so that staff can identify you and we'll promote you so that you can unmute yourselves and you can speak. And again, if you're on the phone, star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute.
I see we have Seema Stein. Seema, if you're here, please press star six and unmute and you may begin.
Hi, my name is Seema Stein. Um, I live in the area for a few years now. I have, I oppose this um, very much. I see that the traffic has gotten so, so bad just, just in the last few years that I've been here. Um, and I drive a lot locally for my job and it just keeps getting harder and harder to get to, um, all different places you need to go, whether it's picking up our kids, work, appointments, um, meetings, and I strongly oppose this. Thank you.
Thank you Seema.
Looks like we have, apologies, my mic wasn't on. Abby Greenberger, put his hand up.
Good afternoon, Council. My name is Abby Greenberger and I oppose the zoning change. I live right behind the property for over thirty years and my primary concern is public safety. The cross streets of Coney Island Avenue and Avenue O where this building is being put up have resulted in many accidents over the years. The Department of Transportation has even installed a pedestrian island to help mitigate the issue. Every few months, they have to come back and replace the signage on the island because another vehicle has crashed through it. Adding this many more units than is currently zoned for in the vehicular traffic that will accompany it is a terrible idea. If this gets approved, it will result in an increase in pedestrian injuries and hopefully no fatalities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Avi. So again, our very, very last call. If you're in the Zoom and you haven't testified, please raise your hand using the Zoom. Raise hand function or star nine on your phone. I see we have Eliu Seton.
Eliu, go ahead.
Do you hear me?
Yes, you may begin.
I'd like to point something out, which is that all the people that seem to be in support of this measure are outsiders coming in here. There's been multiple speakers, I think probably at this point, perhaps two dozen or something like that. There has been two speakers from supposedly Brooklyn who've been in support of this rezoning. And one of them is from around forty-five minutes away, and one of them lives nearby. This represents something, and it's that this community uniformly is against this sort of rezoning in general. And not only that, understands that it's not within the interest of anybody living here to bring in these sorts of people in. Not not as in that. It's not as in that it's, we don't need housing. We need housing for the community. We need housing that would represent what we want, and this simply doesn't.
Do we have anyone else registered to testify? We have a Terry. Terry, please unmute yourself, and you may begin.
Hello. Hello. Yes, thanks for taking my call. I live in the neighborhood. My name is Terry Blatt. My children grew up here. I've been living here for, my family's been living here for at least sixty years. And, you know, my husband's family, and then when I got married, we moved in about thirty years ago. And the traffic that has come, you know, become very unbearable, it's scary. The ambulances can't get through. There's one-way streets here. The streets are narrow. I take care of two elderly ladies, my mother-in-law and her cousin. One is a hundred and three, one is in her nineties. And we've had to call ambulances, and they have a hard time getting here. I had to go to a doctor's appointment yesterday, and a normal ride that would take literally ten minutes took us at least twenty-five minutes because we just were stuck in traffic right on Coney Island Avenue. And I don't see how this is gonna help the neighborhood, the people who live here, or the people who are coming here. I think the people who need places to live, which I understand, a lot of people need places to live, but maybe it should be placed in a place that's not so populated and densely populated and someplace that would have more room for them to live. And it's not fair to them and not fair to the people who are living here. So I oppose the, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Last call. Last call. If you want to testify, you did not testify already, please raise your hand. Okay. Yeah, you testified. You can submit it for the record, okay? Thank you. Thank you. There being no more testimonies for, just one second. There be no more members of the public who wish to testify on LUs one sixty-eight, one sixty-nine relating to eighteen eighty dash eighteen eighty-eight Coney Island Avenue rezoning proposal. The public hearing is now closed, and the items are laid over. That concludes today's business. I would like to thank my members of the public, my colleagues, subcommittee counsel, Lynn Use, and other council staff, and Sergeant Arns participating in today's meeting. This meeting is hereby adjourned. Thank you.
I always wanted to do that.